Let the record state. Myself, Mary Ryan, Councilperson, Staff Councilperson, and Martini Councilperson McKinley. Any person who meets the in-person requirements of the government executive order. And then you've got Councilperson Andrew, and we have all the council. In place now.
And if you'll join in. Work our way through this.
Now you can unmute.
This is the technology piece, a little more complicated than what. And I am the meeting. While I always try to make your guidance. Just be in your ears. Here's the case. I'm going to have our time, our team. As always, as they prepare all of our personal. And especially on this, that we're saying, all of our services here, number of data.
Yeah, if you're going to speak just unmute, and then I'll pick up everybody else.
We'll do our best here. All right. We have four public comments tonight. We have. It's fun, I can already tell.
You're good.
This evening for public comment, we have Leisha Miller, Nora Grofey, Diane Gaines, Tom Strupe, Susan Carter, Kenneth Kunkel, Paul Gerting, Katie Jones, David Jones, Stephanie Boyd, Frank Chase, and I believe we had Tracy Mitchell. Wanted to comment virtually, do we have anyone else?
Did you say Kristi Huffman and Mark Huffman?
I'm sorry.
Kristi and Mark Huffman.
Okay, Kristi and Mark. A couple of quick items, I'm assuming that most of those individuals who are here to speak tonight are here to comment on the IPO Butler design for Bessie and Butler. So we can do two things. Take this opportunity to comment now, in three minutes then, or you can wait till the event, and an item comes up. And you can comment at that point in time, so if you'd like to go ahead and comment now, just raise your hand, and I'll have you come up.
I was asking you, is it a possibility here we have to say, then they come and make a motion?
Absolutely, yes, oh yes, everyone will comment before we make the motion, yes, okay. I'm seeing that everyone would like to defer, right? Good, just want to verify that, thank you all. All right, tonight, council, we have item five A, one and two, that is our town council meeting minutes for October 13, 2020, as well as our town council workshop meeting minutes for October 27, 2020. Council, you can approve these as one over all together. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve both.
By Councilperson McKinley, second by Councilperson staff, council, any discussion? Seeing none, and there's virtually none, okay, please begin voting with Councilperson staff. And then Councilperson Andrew.
Aye.
Aye, that's good, and Councilperson Williams.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you, council. Next up under resolutions, ordinance is for approval first reading, this is Resolution 2020 dash zero six. This is a resolution amending the general fund for the town of Windham in 2019, 2020. And staff, we need to have a public.
Yes, sir.
All right. Looking for a vote tonight, or just the first reading?
It's a resolution, so reading.
That will be our reading for tonight. That brings us to contracts and amendments.
You need a motion to approve. No, it's, it's, it only takes one reading, but it needs a vote.
My apologies.
It's for the amendments for the, the budget to reconcile.
Okay, council, thank you for the clarification, Robert. So for Resolution 2020 dash zero six, council, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson McKinley, thank you, second from Councilperson Martini. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, and on Zoom, I see none as well, good. All right, seeing none, we'll begin voting with Councilperson McKinley.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilperson Andrew.
Aye.
Councilperson Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. This brings up item D, these are contracts and agreements, so these are the items that everyone is here to comment on this evening. So now we get our next choice, so we're going to have. We'll have a bit of a presentation, and then we can have some discussion, and then council will discuss, fair enough? All right, because I know everybody wants to definitely comment.
Yeah, there's.
Sir, John?
I can do the initial presentation, then we can get into what can be decided tonight, and there's five variables that you have to take a look at. You know, one, because you did receive some information a little late this afternoon, early afternoon, relative to a hybrid between the two IPOs. You could table this decision into a future meeting, whether it be next week, we do have available dates. But if you want to move forward, then you can either approve the hybrids, which would be similar to what the IPO for Bessie looks like. You can approve both, you can approve one, or you can just deny both of them. It's solely up to council, but those are the five variables they have right now. And what I meant by the hybrid of the two is I sent an email out to town council earlier today, pretty much describing, again, I'll just read it for the, the record, over the past several months, staff has been working with residents, both directly and indirectly impacted elected officials, grant administrators, legal counsel, and others relative to the three. Hazard mitigation grant program grants, and the hazard mitigation grant programs are forwarded to us because, for a year. This is something that we file for, because we knew we just didn't have the money available for those big ticket items for the stormwater assessment, because you only receive about $220,000 or $230,000 a year in stormwater assessment that comes to the town. And we only have about 130 to 150 that we can actually allocate to those cures. So we did receive about $3 million in HMGP grants, each one is separate from the other. The first one's for West Second Avenue, and the second one is for Butler, and the third one is for the Bessie Stormwater Basin. So we've held numerous Zoom meetings, onsite meetings and workshops during that time, we have staff, we've researched, amended, we worked, we negotiated, and we listened to both the residents and our elected officials. And what we've learned is the following, and I think this is what you would hear as far as repetition tonight from a lot of the residents, is that you want to maintain the width of the roadways. You want to maintain the dirt roadways, you want to maintain the stormwater systems, both existing and in the future. You want to construct utilities based on water master plan, you want to limit the impacts as much as possible while maintaining what is existing, and not to diminish the look, feel, and charm of the area. You don't want to utilize the Green Book standards, because they're not conducive to the standards that wouldn't American achieve without a drastic change. And then we want to seek out funding assistance that would not require us to adhere to the aforementioned bullet points. So with that said, tonight, I would. Okay. Can everybody hear me? Raise your hands. No, we're good, we're good. Yeah, the only thing that echoes on there because it's lower to almost mute. No problem. It is on. Yeah, so hopefully we didn't lose out on the very beginning, but as far as the hybrid, what we're looking at is both IPOs will be written in the same manner. Staff had written in two different IPOs, and now it's based on the comments that were made at the workshop. So that's why you have a difference in Butler, and then the Bessie. The IPOs will be focused on stormwater only. Should the council want to add potable water within the scope, then we will do so. The existing roads will either maintain the existing width, or be amended to whatever the town council thinks appropriate. Meaning that whatever roadway width is out there will remain, and then we'll create a stormwater system to accommodate that roadway. If you should come up with a typical that you want us to adhere to, then we could design based on that typical, meaning that, you know, Butler is 20 feet in some areas, it's 18 feet in some areas. But if you want it to be 12 feet, then again, with that conceptual part of it, then we can reduce the impacts to the people that live adjacent to that roadway. Again, it's still up to council, whether you just want to just keep them as they exist today, or to reduce the size. And again, reducing the size can be part of the design discussion that we have with the first IPO and the second IPO. And we're hoping that because we do the hybrid, we're maintaining the roadways, you know, that would give a level of comfort to the residents that, again, we're not touching the roadways. We're just going to go ahead and try to take care of the stormwater, and then if the town council sees it, we would go ahead and work in the utilities. So the roads will stay the same, stormwater systems will be worked, and they will be maintained, and then the local impacts will be reduced. So again, we're trying to achieve all three of those main points and goals that everybody has. Emailed, texted, and voiced at previous meetings into mirror image IPOs for both of those projects. The only danger that I would say is that the danger we face is that once senior reviews the design, they may not either fund the design, or may not fund the construction. You know, we've made that one clear at previous meetings, you know, based on the conversations that we've had with the grant administrator, they have stated that you must follow Green Book standards. But we do believe that we have at least some chance of argument stating that, well, they've approved some grants in the past that haven't met those standards, especially when it comes to strictly stormwater, so we'll use that as a negotiating basis. And we'll have Mike DeLore on, retaining it with me, to go ahead and make those negotiations with FEMA. Once we get to that point in design, we're going to actually present them with something. And then the other question was the CCNA, and we're just waiting for Doug Galloway to send us a letter that states, yes, we didn't have to go ahead and bid design out. We're going to bid the construction out of the awarded, but that issue hasn't resolved. But again, if the design doesn't get approval from FEMA, that doesn't mean that we just wasted money. What that means is now we still have a design based on our own criteria and our own guidelines on how to cure stormwater issues in those two basin areas. So it's money that you would have spent probably anyway, if you were to, you know, try to cure those basin areas, and it's a way to, you know, alleviate the concerns of the residents by saying, we're going to maintain the roadway width, we're going to take care of the stormwater, and it's going to be by our own hand and our own rule. The danger of that is, again, you're losing out on $800,000 for construction for Butler, and $80,000 of design, so it's, or $780,000 for still the $800,000 for Butler. And then when it comes to Bessie, you're looking at about 1.2 million. Now, again, these are 25%, 75% matching grants, so you're already going to have to kick in some money to offset that cost. But for those grants, we wouldn't be able to do these projects in one set. Again, you're going to be looking at, if we're to do it self-funded, we would either have to piecemeal it, you know, do the band-aid fixes that we talked about in previous meetings. Or we would have to possibly increase the assessment if we wanted to get these projects accelerated on the capital permits program. West Second Avenue isn't a part of discussion tonight, because we haven't had a lot of pushback on that. I believe only increasing the width of that roadway by about two to four feet, and it's mostly just a curving, and that'll actually strengthen the edge of pavement already there. So again, that's a $900,000 project, we'll be kicking in $250,000, but that will be coming from the road CFP, because we're redoing that for the road CFP anyway. So the other two projects would strictly come from the stormwater assessment fees if we maintain just the stormwater aspect of the project. And with that, I'll entertain any questions, and jump is given here, we do have Victor Galloway from Kimble Warren Associates online as well.
Thank you, Robert, John, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, actually, if I could say something, one more thing is that they, if you were to approve this idea, they do come back to town council for approval. So this is not the final set. And as we did with the concepts, we'll continue to maintain our conversations, either via Zoom or in-person meetings like we have been with those that would be potentially either directly or indirectly impacted with the 500-foot rule that we've now established. In addition, again, we put a lot of, about the lack of maintenance of the existing systems, and coming up with an SOP, seems of features to maintain what we have. We're working with various engineers on creating that plan now. This will enable us to better, you know, overall plan, as well as create a stopgap until the ultimate fixes can be funded. Once we have that plan, we'll present it to town council. And then we have long-range planning, we have a couple of engineers, we have John, we have Mike, we have Kate, Jay, we have a lot of in-house resources. Over there, we're trying to utilize whatever we can to make sure that we get a maintenance plan going. But again, what I want to emphasize to not only the residents, but also to town council, please understand that staff works under the direction of town council. We were tasked with an arduous objective of maintaining dirt roads, establishing stormwater systems, implementing potable water systems, and finding ways of assisting the funding, all while maintaining the charm of what we have, and with the least amount of impacts to the area as a whole. We believe that we have accomplished this to the best of our abilities, and have gone over and above what other jurisdictions would have. It would be difficult to find another town where engineers, elected officials, staff members, make it a point to reach out either by phone, email, text, in-person meetings, or in Zoom, as much as women are asked. So I know this is a controversial subject, you know, change is always, as Bill says, is a four-letter word in this area. But when it comes to roads, I want to emphasize that staff, staff works for the town and never against it. You know, I just want to make that clear again, we work for the town, and we don't work against it, so we're trying to do what we can as directed by town council. But everybody can hopefully understand what kind of tasks that we're dealing with by keeping the dirt roads, maintaining stormwater, getting utilities, and then also trying to get grants for these, so we can offset any increases in the assessment, or reduce our legal exposure that's out there currently.
Thank you, Robert, and I appreciate the additional information and the, and the modifications. And, you know, and I do want to say, I want to make sure that everyone does understand, first of all, I know that this, there's a lot of passion behind this issue, can everybody hear me? Okay, let me see how I can do better. I'm just getting right into it here, how's that? All right, I feel like I'm running a radio show now or something, so. You know, I do want to make it pretty, pretty clear that staff responds to the council. And sometimes we, as a council, can put the staff into difficult situations that, you know, require a lot of finesse and delicateness and, and flexibility with. We did ask for staff to go out and find grant funding. Grant funding often seems like a perfect way to go, that allows us to leverage the funding that we have available here. And we've used grant funding many, many, many times, not our first rodeo on grant funding. You know, a lot of our roads, Sixth Avenue, Main Street, were paved with, with grants that we obtained. Most of our stormwater improvements were done actually with, with a lot of grants that we got through the Tri-Res system as well. So we've had good luck with those, we've had some struggles as well, so, you know, we are always learning, and we are always adapting and changing, so. But I do want to make it clear that we give the staff direction, so it's council's job tonight to assimilate all the information that we've heard from all the residents, to take that information that we have from the staff, to, to take the information that we have from our budget, and look to and make the best decisions that we can for our town moving forward, that's what we do all the time. I know that everybody operates on this council with a very clear mind and clear heart in terms of what we want for our town and community, so. I've spoken with many of you, I know that you guys have spoken with, with other members of the council, so we want to make sure that, you know, we move forward on that foot. There are some big takeaways that I've learned through this process as well, in terms of how we can present these types of projects in a better way in the future, because these will come again. You know, we'll have additional opportunities and additional projects that we want to do, and I think a lot of this comes in terms of how it's, how we present, whether you can touch them, whether you can see them, whether you can feel them. And are they typical, or are they customized, right? So I think that's really important, I think that's what we need to do as we move forward on these projects, to do a better job. I think at this point, I want to make sure, council, do you have any questions based upon the options that are in front of us tonight? I'm not going to discuss the actual proposal, but just to see, like, hey, do we, do we want any specifics on those items from John, or staff, or from the engineers? You know, I can think of some things, for example, you know, for my thinking, I personally, when we get to talking about this, I'd like the maintenance plan separate from any other projects. Because I want, I know that everyone would like us to have a maintenance plan, I know we're committed to that. But I want to make sure that we have something that's usable, and something that we can implement. If we have the best maintenance plan in the world, and we can't do it and implement it, and we don't have the staff or the equipment, it's not going to get us where we want to go. So, you know, when we get to that point, that's just my preference, that we talk about those things as separate items. I think, you know, tonight, we've got to talk about utilities a lot, we're not doing design build, is that what Robert is saying, Robert, we're just going to do design at this point? And then we'll have various cures, so I want to make sure that council also has the opportunity to ask any specific questions that they have about the options that we have in front of us to move forward. Part of this comes from the, the, as we evolved in this process, and talking with everyone, and getting input, the second, the Bessie IPO looks a lot different than the Butler IPO. The Butler IPO looks a lot more rigid, the Bessie IPO gives a lot more flexibility and gets away from some of those uniform standards they think had people very concerned, talks about things like a 10-foot road. There is none of that talk in the Bessie one, so those are some of the differences, so if you hear those, that's what we're kind of talking about and addressing. So, because at the very least, we ought to be, they ought to be equal, so. And when I say equal, I don't mean they're going to look exactly alike, but they ought to have the same flexibility to get us where we want to go. Counsel. Any questions at this point? Does everybody in the audience?
If Bill's speaking, time to unmute.
Mr. Mayor, can. See, like, they took the, that's ridiculous.
What happened?
He, Smith, cut off the chat.
Hang tight, they're trying to fix it. Robert? Mayor?
What I want to make sure of is that the, the original agenda that was posted, that everyone saw and emailed about, had Seventh and Butler. The IPO was, it included 18-foot road, the perms, the swales, all that stuff. The Bessie and Ninth IPO did not, it was strictly stormwater, it didn't include any road width changes, that type of thing. So now, the hybrid that Robert's talking about is. So, so now that the, the new information that we're supposedly switching to is both of those IPOs, project IPOs are the Bessie and Ninth style, they're, they're, we're switching to that, or asking for approval of that particular style of IPO. So I'm sure there'll be lots of questions, but I just wanted to get a kind of gauge for the audience of who did not understand what's going on.
Yeah, because we, as you know, we really did receive multiple emails.
Yeah, I got 129 so far.
I'd make name it to be 30 Sunday email massacre.
And again, I think that hit on all the main bullets, and if I was cut off earlier.
Blank, blank, blank.
Apologize.
Hey, guys, we can't really hear you, can't hear you.
But I want to make sure that, you know, people understand, again, you understand that you want to maintain the width of the roadway, you maintain the dirt roadways, you maintain the stormwater systems, those ones that we currently have, and the ones that we create in the future. Construct utilities based on the water master plan. You would want to limit the impacts as much as possible, and maintain what is existing, as not to diminish the look, feel, and charm of the area. Do not want to agree with standards as they are not conducive to standards that have been in our life. And then you want to seek out companies that would not require us to meet the Green Book standards, the standards that we set for ourselves. Am I pretty much getting all the comments that were in those emails?
The majority of the emails that I got requested that we not take any grant funding, because of, I guess, because of the way the, the IPOs were structured, and the potential impact on the town, and the, and the road width, and that type of thing. There's a lot of. There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people. I'm sorry? This one? Or this one? Okay. Because I get Sure, yeah.
While you were speaking, I was person. It looks like the town hall is not muted and it also looks like she is not. So maybe if we mute those two, we'll have a little better save them for later. And then those folks who are listening at home also, it probably helps a little bit to have those.
Bill, you want to add any questions? I do have a question that you should ask.
Well,
Just sort of warm verses unless you're at this podium, as if you're not here. So just wait until public comment and then you can add your time. Because it's not and everybody gets, it interrupts everything.
Yeah, I, I don't want to interrupt or I don't want to replicate what the residents are going to say. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what, you know, what the new IPO ideas were rather than what is in the agenda.
Yeah, and then to answer your question relative to the grants portion, you know, if the designs are approved by town council, which incorporates all the comments from the residents, then the grant will refund that construction of the design that old town council and residents agrees. So if they're just saying no to grants whatsoever, then, you know, there's no, no point in moving forward with, you know, moving forward this. But if they're saying, if you can get still the grants with the designs that we got and that we come up with, then I believe, you know, why would we, why would we give a free money and look at a, a, a sudden decrease if that was a case?
So I need to turn this on and unmute myself on here.
Yes, just one second. For the, for the audience again. Excuse me, for the audience again. Hello? Okay. You have an opportunity to speak. The mayor will call on people to get up to the podium and speak. The thing is, is that when you guys talk and you just have John here, we want to make sure it's limited as much as possible. So okay, that'll be part of, that'll be part of public speaking.
I'll make sure that everyone who wants to make any comments or questions will have that opportunity. What we ask is that you wait, so you can do that at the podium, because otherwise
We can't hear anything on the Zoom call, guys.
All right. Chris?
No, I saw the sign. We cannot have the chat on during the meeting because it's a way to circumvent the public speaking portion. If you wish to speak during the public speaking forum, those that have signed up will speak first. Then the mayor will ask if there's any other speakers that would like to speak. Then you would, if you're on Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand with the little icon. Everybody gets three minutes, three minutes and that's it. Dorothy will be doing the time and then it'll be up to town council whether they can allocate more time to a various speaker. But again, we have a key to chat even. And you can go ahead and ask those questions once it gets to the public speaking forum.
Robert?
Yeah, no problem. I, I just wanted to kind of a quick, you know, elaboration of how the two ideas we'll call on one how number two ended up so different. So after these meetings.
Hang on, guys.
And the reason for that. Andy, can you not hear?
Well, hang on, Chris. What I, let me just tell you what let me explain what's going on on our end. Is if you and Robert are both open miked, we can't hear. So it, it's going to be a pain. It has to be a switch. We can, Bill works really well with him and Robert on. They must be far enough apart or close enough together, but we can't hear the mayor if he's not unmuted and Robert is, is muted. Okay, it's got to be one person at a time unmutes or we lose everything on our end. Okay, it works pretty good. But that's what we're running into and that's the reason we've got Joe and Jim over here jumping up and down is we can't hear.
What if we try to move the mic from one person to another or?
That may work. It's just like when the mayor speaks and he's not unmuted and you are unmuted, we don't hear.
Okay.
It's, it's literally a one, a jumping bean at this point of who gets to be unmuted to speak. If not, we don't hear anything or we have a huge echo. It's one or the other. I hate to say it. It works. We're doing great.
No, it's
Chris?
Perfect.
Better. Okay, so I, I don't know where you heard or not heard, but essentially we had an aha moment and it was looking back at other stormwater projects. One specifically that is near my house on 12th and Oakdale, which used the same type of funding. And there was no changes to the roads. So we had to meet together and said, we just need to look at this from stormwater only, leave roads out of it. And we've already got precedent here in the town. So I, I, I think what we're kind of looking for in the second IPO is, is to come up with a design that is amenable. And we hire another engineer, and that's Mike Galora, as a peer reviewer and somebody who's already working with the county and FEMA on this to be able to sell our design essentially. And, and I think that is the spirit of IPO number two, which was the, the best project. And John, if you, is there's anything you didn't want to add? Because I know you were heavy in those conversations.
Yeah. Can't hear anything, guys.
All right, you're live.
Okay.
So just talk through the mic.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now? Okay, good.
Yes.
So, so we, we, we kind of went back and looked at, you know, how have we done these in the past and how have we done them with grant funding? And the HMGP grant, which is a specific grant that we're talking about, is purely for stormwater mitigation. It comes from hurricanes in the past that have caused flooding and, and damage. And so just to make it a stormwater initiative is kind of what Mike and I have done in the past for a lot of the other projects that we've completed. So we kind of, kind of took a step back, said, okay, you know, we, maybe, maybe we did make a little mistake moving forward with trying to, trying to come up with standardization, road whist and everything else. We heard from the residents, they didn't like it. And so now I think what we're doing is really going back to what we've been practicing over the last 10 to 12 years with grant funding and stormwater mitigation that we've been doing all along. And so I feel pretty confident that, you know, with Mike, peer reviewing and kind of being the vision keeper for against the grant, we have set precedents in the past, both on Eighth and Bessie as well as 12th and Oakdale. So I feel very confident that I think the grants will suffice. South Water Management Grant that we did for First Avenue, STAG grants that we did on South Butler Boulevard, all of those were purely stormwater driven. I think when we decided that we wanted to turn it into both a stormwater and a roadway improvement plan, that's when we started getting into the stickiness of trying to make sure we're maintaining standards. We do have to maintain standards in all grants, but we're following standards that we're doing specific for the stormwater because we're not doing anything other than grading roads. So I hope that gives a little bit of clarity. So the idea was is to restructure the IPOs back to what the standard bearer that we've been using all along for the last 12 years and successfully doing projects. I think the only kind of untold portion is, okay, I get that, but what does that mean relative to swell, swell location, size of swales and all that other stuff? But that's all part of the design process. And so by committing to the IPO, I think it's going to be incumbent upon probably myself to actually work with the residents and also Kim Lee Horn as we have in the past manners and looking at where swales go, how do they work within the environment? And in talking with Victor earlier before the meeting, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to say anything out of term that Kim Lee Horn wouldn't support. But Victor was supporting the saying, you know, look, we, we have flexibility with the swell sizes. We have flexibility with where they go. But what we don't have flexibility is ensuring that we have the proper volume. And so we may end up with a few more swales, but they may not be as big. But that's all part of massaging the design into an environment to do what we're saying on these five bullet points.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. I think as we talk about these, the so with, with, with making those changes, you're going to have more flexibility and options. And I guess I'm just looking for you to nod on this. So I want to make sure, because one of the challenges we've had is making sure that our you know, not pointing at one engineering company or another, but that the engineers that are responsible for a project get what we want. Can we get that? Or do you feel confident that we can make that happen? You, you can just nod or say no. Okay, fair enough.
I got my mic on, yeah.
Should we? We'll see how everybody does here.
So, so the answer to that, the answer to that is, I say that in some of the rights on this, in some of the early conversations that I've had. At the end of the day, if you do a tenant, if you do a design, they said, I'm sure things happen, they certainly have. It's just really matter, matter of how we can change it now.
Right.
And if I may add, I, I think that was the important part of Mike jumping on this as a peer review and also, you know, kind of our negotiator, you know, as we navigate through, you know, these grants, because he's been working with the town for, for a long time. And I, I think he does understand, you know, what we're needs. And I think he'll, you know, tighten those reins, you know, on, on a bigger firm that may not quite have a grasp to make sure that they do have that grasp.
All right. And, and thank you, John. I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilperson South. Councilperson McKeen, you were whispering something.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, it might be better for John to speak at the podium.
If it may, maybe we can work that out. Yeah. I agree. Okay, we'll do that now. Also, I just want to be sensitive since we have council persons that are online. I want to make sure that Councilperson Andrew and Councilperson Williams do not want to take this opportunity to ask any questions.
I am good. Been over this a bunch lately.
Councilperson Williams, are you?
I'm fine. I'm good. No questions.
I don't, this is the first time I've heard of any of this, so I'm kidding. I, I don't have any questions. I, I, I'm with Councilmember Williams. I've, I've had a lot of conversations lately about all this. I think I understand what's going on. I'd really like to hear some, from some residents. And if we have an opportunity, can we circle back around with council after the residents speak so that we can maybe ask any outstanding questions or any questions that kind of springboard off of what we hear from, from our public comments?
We will absolutely do that. Thank you, Councilperson Andrew. Counsel, any further comments prior to public comment? Counselperson?
Okay. And this question will be for you, John, if you'd like to go to the podium. Thank you. First witness. Anyway, you, you had just mentioned that you and Mike had done some design along the same line with the same type of grants. What, what standards did the two of you use?
Because of the stormwater initiatives, the, the, we use, you know, head-on calculations and just standard stormwater best management practices. Because mostly what we're doing is improving what's currently there.
Right.
It's fairly low bar. And so we weren't banning roadway designs. We worked about specific standards. All we were looking at was that draw calculations, best management practices. And then following the letter of the law associated with all the supplement requirements.
Okay, so yeah, but it was a standard and you accomplished that. My, my concern is that at the last meeting we had, there was concern whether Kim Lee Horn would sign off on anything less than the standards that were in the green book. Has that changed?
Yes.
Okay, but also within the swell design. So we're, we're left, my understanding is of right now, if we go with this hybrid situation, is we would have our roads the same. But we would still have a 14-foot swell.
It's not necessary. And we proved that if you have, if you have a pass
Okay, but, but there's no guarantee that this, that they will sign off on this once we present them with the plans. Okay, thank you.
Councilperson McKeen leaning further questions, Counselor? All right. I think at this time, we will take our opportunity to hear from the public. We will begin starting with those individuals that are present. When I have you come up, please remember that you'll have three minutes. We'll need your name and your address for the record. And if you're speaking specifically on one project versus another, you might want to let us know that as well. We'll go ahead and begin with Lisa Miller.
Do we have to accept the whole IPO? Can we just accept the design phase and see what that is in a motion? If we have the 25% for Bessie and Butler, which is about $500,000, if we don't take the grant money, is that money available immediately to do road improvements if we don't take the grant money? And then you had also mentioned that there's an option to look at this for the week and get back to it next week, I believe, Robert. This is all comes so fast and furious. It is changed constantly, at least in the resident side. Every week it is something different, something new, some standard that had to be met, some standards that could change. And now to a thought today, you know, a whole nother approach, which is great. It's moving in the right direction. But there's things that just keep coming up very fast and furious that are even hard to keep up with, I'm sure for you also as well. So I, I think it needs to take a moment and really think about this and see. But if you guys could think about some of those questions, it would be nice to know especially what the standards are and the strings that are attached. And if the money's available anyway, whether we do it or don't do it, because if we make it feel like they had to wait. Because if we make it feel like they have to wait, but if we have the half a million dollars to fund our 25%, do we have a half a million dollars to do our own improvements if we need to? Nora Grofey, 426 Magnolia Street. I don't know which glasses to put on. So for months, we've been told that we have to maintain these green book standards. Now, all of a sudden today at 2:00, we don't have to maintain the green book standards. We were told at the last workshop that the FEMA grant was for, uh, roadworks and stormwater. And that it couldn't be changed. Couldn't go back and redo it. Now we're being told that's not the case. We've been told 14-foot swales are absolutely required. That you have to have 14-foot swales. And now we're being told, eh, maybe not so much. You know, we, we've had residents reduced to tears because town management has stood in their yard and said they're gonna, they're gonna take 20 feet out of their yard and rip out all their landscaping that they've spent years growing. You know, residents are exhausted by this. This has been going on for months. We keep asking questions. We keep getting answers. And then the answers change and we have different answers. And, you know, now we have an agenda that came out Thursday night. And by the time we get to the meeting today, you've changed the agenda. The IPO isn't, isn't the same anymore. So, you know, it's impossible for residents to understand what we're doing here. You know, I, I, I think this, this whole FEMA thing has been so haphazard and so pushed.
Change the agenda.
We have a deadline. We have to do this. We have to do this. We, we have to, you know, we have to have the swales. We have to have the green book. And now in the space of three hours, all of a sudden that's sort of up in the air. No, we don't need any of that. You know, you're asking residents to give you an enormous amount of trust in essentially a blank check. And we don't have anything to look at. I don't think that's fair for residents. And, you know, the other thing I'm confused about is the IPOs have changed from being roadworks and stormwater to being only stormwater. But the amount of money doesn't seem to have changed. Shouldn't it be less than half of what it was if you're not doing any of the roadworks? Thank you.
There's no blank check on this. This is, this is the American part to council proceeding. Also, the design portion will have to be approved as well. So there are several way, uh, for checks balances. It is, you know, listen, there have been a lot of changes. I'm not going to say there hasn't been a lot of changes. And again, this is all part of learning how we do these things, but there are, uh, you know, we're looking at this as an opportunity to, uh, take feedback and responses from, um, public and try to incorporate those. Now, council still has to decide whether it meets the intent that we hear from, from the residents and whether it meets the best interest of the town. So there are lots of opportunities here along the way. And if council decides, like, listen, there hasn't been enough time to have this conversation, then we'll push this conversation until there is enough time. Okay, so I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it, this is, it is challenging. But I also want to make sure, especially some of you guys on the committees, you clearly understand that sometimes things can, you think they're going in perfectly right direction, then all of a sudden you're not. And it can make a lot of factors change. So just, uh, just some clarification there. Robert, I'll mute. And if you want to address any other questions.
Relative to the IPOs and, you know, going from reboot to non-reboot, the contracts that we sign, you know, it, you go from certainty to a possibility of uncertainty as to what the outcome is going to be of whether FEMA is going to accept the design. So staff provided you an IPO or a concept that met the letter of the contract that we signed for those grants, which means that you have to meet these standards. And so that's the direction that we were going for. Um, and that's a hundred percent win if you take it to FEMA. Now, the more you deviate from those standards, the more chances you have that they will not fund the design nor the, the construction. And we understand that. And so what we're saying now is, okay, if you're willing to take a chance, then here's the IPO that meets everything that the residents want. And we, even if FEMA doesn't approve it, then we still can use it to create a capital improvement program that the stormwater assessment can fund eventually, but not immediately. If FEMA does accept that we're not adhering to these standards based on the arguments of past projects, then they would fund the construction in a manner in which that we designed it the way that we want to. But the whole purpose of us adhering to those reboot standards that we were talking about was to not only maintain the standards that are in our home codes, but also the codes that FEMA and are well settled by engineering guidelines to make sure that we would definitely get the, the design funded and the construction funded. So that's why things have changed from one IPO to the next. Now, this, this hybrid is saying, okay, well, we're gonna have to design it anyway at some point. So let's go ahead and design it the way that we want to do it. And then if FEMA doesn't fund it, you know, we'll make the best argument that we can. We still haven't lost that money. And the reason that the money doesn't change is because they're still trying to design the same basic areas. You can still take out, again, boat of water. You can take out construction bidding. You can outcard it to reduce that overall IPO if we need to. Because we wouldn't go to actual, uh, construction phase services or anything like that unless, uh, we had the money to fund it ourselves if FEMA were to deny, uh, the design. So yeah, the, the IPO, the actual total cost changed and we drafted it such that they would have to deliver certain things in the, um, certain timeframes that the council would approve as we go, keep going forward. But if this IPO would end that design if FEMA didn't approve the designs. So that's why things changed and, you know, um, we apologize for that. But again, it's a very grand, you know, we, we were trying to not only accommodate what's in the contracts and what's in the guidelines, but also what the residents want. But what the residents want don't meet standards. And we're still saying, okay, we're gonna go ahead and still try to get the construction money. And if they say no, and we still haven't lost the money of the design.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next up, Ms. Brandy Haynes.
Hi, Brandy Haynes, 835 Oakdale Street. I've had a lot of problems with this from the beginning. I, I do feel like every time, and I, and I fully understand what people do projects because of my history at working with the Corps of Engineers. And even I'm having a hard time keeping up with the changes. Now, 26 hours, I've been told that the swell could be reduced on one half of my property. Within an hour after that, and this was conversations I had with Chris and John, then I was told, no, it's going to have to maintain the 14-foot swell. And then six-foot utility easement, which can't be altered because that's, as far as I'm understanding, what I was told yesterday, the six-foot is specific to orange house plot and three-foot shoulder. Now we're walking back again, and it's, it's literally been like 26 hours. And we're saying, yes, we can reduce the footprint. So coming from a resident perspective, you cannot expect people to have faith in it when things are changing every other day, within three changes within 26 hours. And you guys want us to put our support and weight behind what your decisions are. But we're not seeing any changes. If we could have a conceptual laid out for us for the charrettes on both projects before, that should be there again before you're gonna, you should expect residents to give the support. The other thing I do have a question about is we keep talking about, you know, one of the things that John said to me yesterday is that the reason, even though the roads were shrinking, was that the swell would still need to be 14-foot because it's the amount of rainfall that it needs to capture. I'd like to know what the metric is we're measuring on. Is this like a 25-year event, a 100-year event? What is the standard we're trying to meet? Or is it more like our ordinances that we have here in town expecting people to keep one inch of rainfall, you know, within their own property? And my other concern is that I know that Brad Cornelia says his zoning officer is going around. He's looking at every single person, property that are along these project corridors to see if they're in compliance with maintaining their stormwater one inch on site if they've had new construction or additions, since the, the rules have changed for the ordinances on that. Yet I feel like I've been pointing out for three years, projects near me that are done by the city that weren't taken care of, that yes, Scott approved with my understanding to the people across the street from me, as well as, um, on Ninth and on Eighth, both directions. I want to know why we're holding the residents of this town to a higher standard of expecting them to not have screwed up their stormwater on site. We're not holding the town to the same standard. Because even though we've talked about these IPOs for a year, and Robert and Scott were both made aware of back in 2018 and 2017 of the problems with the swales across the street from me, nothing has been done or maintained. We kick the can down the road and we talk about new IPO design. If you're gonna hold the residents of this town to a certain level of standard, I damn sure expect that the town will hold itself to the same standard it expects of its residents.
Tom Strup, 201 West 7th. Uh, I've talked to every town, town council at least twice. So the issue that I see with this is that, uh, we've got over 300 signatures, unofficial, unofficial, people saying they don't want this whole swath to be widened. So we're, we're also told by, by Robert and some measurements that I took also, that the road is already almost 18, 15, 18 feet, almost everywhere. So if we're only talking about not doing the road and doing the swales and the ditches, or whatever you wanna call them, we're still talking about 40 to 41 feet of clearance. If we don't change the swell design, the drain design, and the right-of-way design, and the utility access design, we're not narrowing anything. So if we're saying that the roads are already 15, 18 feet almost everywhere, 20 feet in some places, and all we're talking about is not touching the road, still doing the drainage ditch, and we're still talking about 41 feet or more in some places, and that's what the people are opposed to. Most people don't know the width of everything on there, but they know that it's 41 feet of clearance coming down these streets. So if we're gonna have $500,000 available to pay off the 25% of this grant, and we can't reduce these four or five or six streets down to less than 41 feet, I don't mean 40, 40 feet or 38 feet, I mean substantially down, then we should take that $500,000 and do what we would have to do if we did not have the grant money. Because if we did not have this grant money, we would fix these roads. We would not, not fix them, and we would take whatever money we could, including the $500,000 that we are gonna have set aside for this grant money, and we fix the roads. And we would not have to do a 21-foot swell, because if you look at my road now, and you say, I'm leaving the road right where it's at, and you go 21 feet into my yard, we'll ride back to square one. We'll ride back to clearing every single tree off of my yard that we talked about on day one. What was that? Okay, thank you. We'll ride back to clearing every single street off my yard that we talked about on day one. We don't touch the road. And we said the road's fine, but we're still gonna go along with the drain, drain, the whole water retention area, then we're still gonna take 21 feet. We're still taking every single tree out. So we haven't changed anything. The only we didn't do is widen the road right there, which by the way, is already 14 feet anyway. So if we don't fix the drain problem and narrow that down, then all of this is gonna be the same as it was on day one, and really nothing's changed. So like I said, if over 300 people are saying they don't want the 41-foot swath down the road, then the correction needs to be in the drainage, not in the road. And if we, if we can't decide that before we agree on this next large investment in design, then we should put it off and not invest in a large investment on another design that we're not gonna be able to back away from because now we spent $200,000 on. Thank you.
Point of clarification that I would like to double check on to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. When we talk about, when we talk about just doing this as a storm project and kind of loosening those standards in terms of the roadway, not having to abide by those green book standards, that, does that mean that everything, does it, does it include the opportunity to narrow this, this storm, um, methods for moving water? Yeah, I want to make sure everybody can hear, so.
Zoom can't hear. I mean, the last thing we want to do is come into this town and just blow 14 feet on each side of the river. That's not the intent, or it shouldn't be our intent. And it, it, it hasn't affected us in the past. I think, I think we've got some residue left over from still trying to come up with a standard right-of-way utilization program from swales and cross-sections and everything else. I think we've kind of realized that that's not what they want. It's not what I want, you know, as a resident. But I'm also, you know, the engineer working on some stuff. So, you know, you, you do what's right, you know? And so I think that, um, I think there's an opportunity. It's just make, just sitting down right now and working with Al, you know, unfortunately, he was out of town today. We would love to have had a conversation at the moment. I did talk to Victor, so there is some, some reasonableness in which we can massage these swales in appropriately. And it's really just us getting off of that. But to, to Robert's point, we also have to be careful, you know, as we, as we go forward. And that's why I think it's good having Mike as the vision people, because he has done these FEMA grants in the past, and he can keep us to task.
Thanks, John. You know, I just want to make sure that we understand that as a council and as residents that there is potential for change. It, it doesn't have to be the same section width. All right, so let's, I just want to clarify that to make sure I wasn't misspeaking or mishearing.
Yeah, and, and, you know, obviously, when you do something like that, there's obviously inherent risks. But, you know, the only thing that I can bank on is what we've done in the past, and it's been approved. And so, but there's inherent risks, you know, things change, attitudes of FEMA change, so we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, and you know, let's be clear, there's a risk in each one of these decisions I mean that we make. So there, there's risk, you want it full out, there's risk to, to, to piecemeal something, there's a risk there for the town. You know, so we've got to look at all of that. There's also risk with, with tweaking the standards, because then, you know, maybe FEMA will fund it, maybe they won't. You know, we're gonna have to have a good justification to make that happen if we decide to go that direction.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is the bullet points that were outlined in Robert's letter is really a precipice of what came out of the conversations with the residents. And so what we want to do is try and formulate a plan and a design moving forward that still allows, still allows us to use the FEMA funding. I think we would be remiss in getting rid of it. I know the one comment about, you know, right now, we're in the throes of looking at potentially just a stormwater project. Will that mean a reduction in the cost of the work? Absolutely. But the amount of money that they've approved is that amount. And in the past, we've actually been, if we've been judicious about our design and judicious about our construction, we've been able to go back to FEMA and do additional projects based on the awards that we've gotten. Phase one, phase two, phase three of Eighth Avenue is a perfect example of the, where they allowed us to use all of the grant funding that they gave us. We got three more projects out of it. So I, I don't, I don't want people to get caught up on the cost because that, that's an award based on. an award based on what our original perception was, but that's a good thing, if we can reduce the cost.
Absolutely, that's why I talked about that price piece, you know? It, it certainly will move, but the award is the award for, um, the grants themselves. Uh, next up is Mr. Susan Carter.
Susan Carter, what is it, Palm Street? I'm here, uh, first of all, I appreciate, I'm exhausted. I know y'all are really exhausted on this whole issue. I'm, I'm trying to keep, uh, I appreciate the efforts that you're making, I see the efforts, um, I do represent tree board, and um, I noted where you were making, working to go around and try to save as many trees as possible. That said, this still concerns me. I'm concerned about additions to projects, which I know these are conceptual and they keep changing, and there's more impact. I've walked several of these projects, I understand there's a trade off. I also really want to make sure that when we do these trade offs and we have these swales, that we still have room to plant. Because these swales are, I know the size is still in flux, but if they're only planted with grass, which is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if they're only planted with that, then you're severely affecting our tree canopy. I would like to see us be able, I, I mean, i- in my mind, and I've walked Fernwood Park and I've got photos, the trees are absorbing an incredible amount of water there, um, our lakes are up, it's dry over by the Cypress Street. That's one point I want made, but the main thing I want is clarification on what could be planted in these swales. I don't wanna come back and find out, oh, there's no room to plant a tree here, or now it's too close to a house. We try to do the right tree by place, I have to look out for that, I have to look out for utilities, but I wanna make sure we protect our canopy. So, thanks.
Yeah, I think, and that's some of the stuff that we're, we are working on, you know, with, with, with Kimberly Horn. Obviously, if we're looking at massaging some of these swales through and not interrupting some of the landscaping that's currently there, that's obviously not a, that's kind of a, a smaller swale, but a moot point. So one of the things that we're trying to work with, um, and, and again, Howie not being in town this week has not allowed me to get a lot of the answers that I'd like to get, but wha, what we wanna do is try and maintain ourselves out of the, out of the high water level mark, that's actually part of the swell, which isn't the whole swell itself. So there's obviously potential for at the top of the toe of the swell and down a slight toe, and um, that there might be an opportunity for some landscaping. I just have to get what they're comfortable with.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Susan. Uh, next up is Mr. Kenneth Kunkel.
Our Kunkel, also known as Randy, I'm confused by names. I'm gonna be brief, okay? First of all, I was not aware of all these changes that happened, okay? Two o'clock this afternoon, the only thing I believe is what I read in scope, okay? And this scope has obviously changed a lot. There's a couple of things on here that I have read every page of this, okay? I'm not gonna bore you with all the detail, but I, first of all, it says at the top of the second page, this design would incorporate the existing road width and or within selected, by selected by the town council. There is not a thing in this document, okay, that indicates that. Just a little note at the top. No wonder all these people are confused, okay? You're changing things quick, but the only thing I'm never gonna believe is something in writing, and I know how to read scope, so okay, a visionary documents and design. The other thing that says, okay, is this is an IPO, what, 119 Bessie Street and Ninth Avenue Stormwater Maintenance. Just now, we've got to stormwater discussion? I mean, come on, guys, what, what are we doing here? The other thing is, what's, what's the water quality assessment relative to Lake Bessie? Seems to me you're worried about the stormwater going down, and then there's a, a boat dock there, right? What's, what's, do we have a problem with water quality in Lake Bessie? I've never seen anything that indicates that some, one of the, uh, either Orange County or any of our water people have indicated there's a water problem. Oh, there is. So can you show me that in writing? Okay, I, I, I think, I think there's been enough said, okay, tonight. I was not aware, okay, of anything that happened at 2:00 this afternoon relative such to document. I think you owe it to the town residents to put down in writing, okay, what this design is gonna be by whichever engineering firm, okay?
Sure.
So this is Paul Girding. Okay, this is Paul Girding, 606 Butler Street. Um, I've got a question or something. It sounds like Fitzgibbon and Mike, who is Mike? He's the.
Our previous.
Your what?
Our previous.
Okay, so between the two of you, you can toss aside Kimberly Horn? I mean, it sounds like you know more about it than those guys.
So address it to us, we'll get, we'll get this out.
Okay.
Make sure you get the answer to the question. I don't, I think the answer is not, but maybe, we'll see.
Well, it seems like you've got too many engineers, too many people, not enough Indians, is what I'm trying to say. Anyway, um, I love living in Wintermere, I don't have a problem with the traffic, I don't have a problem with the bumps on the street. I'm staying here no matter what you do, it's comfortable, so don't mess with it. That's it. Paul's question. Michael Laura.
So hang on, I'm gonna mute myself so everybody can understand. So Paul's question was if we have an oversight engineer to Kimberly Horn, um, basically do you need to have two sets of engineers? I'm not gonna answer that question, I, I will let John or, or Robert answer that question if you'd like.
It, it's not uncommon to have peer reviews during, um, design phase portions. Um, I think the one thing, and it's not like Mike is gonna engineer the project, I think what we wanted him to do is just be the gatekeeper for FEMA, because he has past history, and is actually the one that has a relationship with Doug Galvin and FEMA. So it was really more or less him being more of a vision keeper based on his past experiences, and he is currently designing a second avenue, which is part of the FEMA package. So, um, that's really, it's not like we're over engineering, so to speak.
So it's more of a second opinion, and then he also has a relationship with FEMA and that past experience in our town for that justice agency piece that we know is very important for FEMA.
Yeah, it, it, what it does is it gives us an opportunity to be successful maintaining the grant based on the bullet points.
Understood. You, 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 we added, yes, we did, AJ, you're reviewing Michael Laura's second project. That's correct, and I recall that, and part of that is because there's intersecting projects. And also because, you know, we just felt that, uh, two sets of eyes on some of these stormwater projects would be a good idea, um, because they're challenging it, and when we have dirt streets, it makes them trickier, for sure.
Mary, I gotta go over to, is that when we first applied the illness grants, you know, that was when Michael Laura was our engineer, so, and he also was the one that came up with the government programs program and then the actual stormwater assessment. So when we saw that we weren't able to fund most of these things ourselves, so I brought on these grants, and so when we applied those grants, he was the head or the face of us trying to get those grants forward. And that's why I think the peer review of just dealing with the grant administrators and on the actual design is gonna benefit us by having him on board as a part of the team. So I'm saying he's gonna design, run our design twice, it's just using your face as , um, they're gonna be grants and grants.
Understood. Um, Councilperson Martini, I believe you had a question.
So, that's a valid question, Polly. And I think, just so everybody knows, um, Kimberly Horn is our engineer. On record for ongoing projects, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that, but they were selected by the town council to, to be our engineer, uh, for, uh, you know, projects that come along. So it's, that's why there is an overlap there, uh, but, you know, Mr. Girding does have a valid question. If Michael Laura is the one who got this ball rolling, you know, is it, uh, is it too many cooks in the kitchen type of thing? So, I mean, that's what we need to determine. Robert, we do have, is that correct? We do have Kimberly Horn as our standing engineering firm?
Yes, that's our, it's a visionary service.
Let me, right, pause one second, there's a second. All right. Curry, are you able in here?
Mr. Curry, are you able in here? Is that what you have, you have trouble? You have to unmute yourself so I can hear you. You're still muted, Shannon, you're still muted, sir.
No one can hear you, you're calling, sorry. It's, it's.
Is this being recorded? Is the Zoom meeting being recorded? Okay, super. And I understand I've got three minutes. Thank you. I think it's appropriate to mute, uh, at certain times, but not when, uh, all the discussion is going on, because I think it's important to be able to have a record, and especially when most of the speaking was garbled and you couldn't get the message from us. So I hope we would consider that in the future. We've been using Zoom since March, and I, and I think there's gotta be some fleshing out of glitches here, so, uh, it would really help, uh, in the event that, uh, we continue to do this. My main point is gonna be, this needs more time. Came on us very shortly, this is one of the most important things that needs to be decided within our town. We need to know where we're going, what the direction is, and we need to have a consensus, uh, because I'm not sure that we're getting that. And the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, we're in a, a economy that is really having some difficulty with the COVID uncertainty. I would suggest that we pull back and spend less and save more. Thank you.
Are you able to hear that, Robert?
Teresa, what I was asking was, could we, could we all hear from the jury, say?
It wasn't, no, I didn't hear it.
Teresa, we, we see the sign, thank you.
Is that one on right there?
Well, we'll continue with comments from the public. And if, so what we are trying to do is if something or someone says something that everyone didn't hear, we're going back to make sure that everyone can do the best of our abilities. So, uh, what's different here tonight from a straight Zoom is that you have multiple Zoom, uh, setup platforms in this, uh, building, so, and in this same room, so we're having to mute the mics, uh, so we don't give an echo to everyone that is listening. So we're doing our best to navigate technology here in, uh, in the midst of COVID. It's definitely easier if everyone's on Zoom, uh, than to do a hybrid, but lesson learned, we're, we're working our way through it. Uh, next up for, uh, public comment is Ms. Katie Jones. If you'll come to the mic and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Katie Hershizer Jones, and we are at 336 Magnolia Street. Take rest. Um, first of all, I wanna apologize because my husband and I became aware of this project Thursday evening at 10:30 PM, um, from a text message from a client who managed their property at 825 Oakdale Street, Pinchot's, who are up in Georgia, and I'm sure are watching, so hello. Um, that, that apology comes because I guess I should be reading the town agenda and be touching up with all this, because it sounds like there's been a lot of passion, a lot of effort in the last year to uncover a solution to the stormwater and the runoff. So we do apologize for being late to the game. I would just say that, um, this is not gonna be in order, so I'm gonna try as quickly as I can and efficiently. But the first question I have is for Robert, which is what has happened to the maintenance of the roads in the last five years? So we built out our home five years ago, and prior to that, the roads were always corrected after the storm, the bumps, you know, would come, and, you know, the character was there, and that was fine, and we didn't have speeders, and now all of a sudden, the last five years, we don't have those corrections taking place, that are happening less frequently, or they're only happening when we call to complain that they haven't been addressed. So that's my first question. The second question is, um, why are we waiting for a maintenance plan for our roads? Isn't there a maintenance plan in place now that we can only improve, modify, change, and alter to form with the residents' opinions about how we have enjoyed the character and the habitat and our roads that have been in place for years the way they are? So why are we waiting on a plan when we don't seem to have one now, and it's been deferred as far as maintenance for the last several years, in our, in our corner especially? Number three question is, how much are you gonna spend to get to the next step of this plan? So what are we talking about in dollars? I know we're reading 120 page, uh, I guess it would be the summary of the last meeting. I saw that we have spent close to 24,000 alone with the engineering firm just to get to today, which is change again, and change again, and change again. The next question is, um, is what you are talking about doing in the future, so, I don't know your name, I'm so sorry, John, did you do that on First Street? Is that what you did on First for stormwater runoff? And I don't wanna lose my time, so answer that question, because whatever it was.
That one made it.
Okay, it's not, I'm sorry. What did you do on First? It's not working, if that's what we're doing.
I'm sure we can, so we can.
In the future, we should have a rework. I have a video, it's right on that corner. Number five, and this is just a summary, overall, something is wrong with our communication process. If residents find out on Thursday at 10:30 at night by getting text messages from their clients, what's happening on our own roadways? We are living in an age of technology, where we have text messaging through, uh, the police chief, which I love, getting a message about, hey, this is safety happening, we need to practice, watch out for this. We have emails that come out, I mean, articles of things in the town, but we have a major project happening, where we're gonna spend a half a million dollars of town money and a couple more million dollars of other people's money, FEMA, and we shall be responsible stewards of that money. And I don't think this process is doing that, it's not timely, it hasn't been well communicated, and people don't know about it.
Next up, uh, is David Jones.
Mary, just want me to.
I, I will, I was gonna see, I thought David might have some comments. Okay. I would, I would. Hey, Mike, you definitely.
Hello, I'm David Jones, Katie's husband, and, uh, certainly communication seems to be, uh, something that I would like to see addressed more, whether it's through mailers or flyers or emails, communication in some way, and I, I'm guilty of it, and I'll tell you straight up, not looking at the website and keeping up with everything that's going on there, but I gotta believe that there's a lot of people out there that don't have internet. I heard door hangers was, was one of the ways that we communicated out, uh, to some of the people who would be affected by this. That alone. That alone certainly would not be my idea of communicating to, looking to those that may not be directly affected. But may have an opinion on, on, on how the money is spent and how, because we all, we all give our taxes. We all, we all pay in. And anybody here that doesn't want the best for the town, I know that Katie and I specifically moved to be on the Sandy Streets and, and love it here. Absolutely love it. And want to continue to see this, this way of life, this community that we have continue in that same manner. I get that we have storm on stormwater runoff problems. I get that we have issues with the ways that the roads are maintained. However, I, I can't believe that there can't be a common ground there. I can't believe that there can't be an all or nothing view in, in trying to get this accomplished. And I think, I think I can look in anybody's eyes here and see that they want the right thing to be done. And finding that line can be a very tough, tough place to be. You're pleasing the left or you're pleasing the right. And but I do believe it can be done. I, I, I can't believe that we can't put this, this many sharp people, this many strong minds in here. Can't come to a conclusion that this could be done correctly. What I do believe is that we're seeing this money sitting out here and how do we capture it? I get free money. I love free money, right? It's, it's something that we would all want to use, not, not our money. But if it's at a cost to us, that's when we have to step back and pick and have some caution. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We'll go ahead and answer those questions. I, I do want to address communication. I mean, even during this process, we've been working on, on additional ways to communicate. So we've had probably five meetings. I can tell you that councils probably met with almost every person in this room. Staffs met with a lot of people in this room. We pump out this information through all social media platforms. You know, we're certainly open to suggestions. If you've got better ways to communicate, share them with me and I'll make sure they get to the right place. Okay. But it, it, it does, that kind of sticks on me a little bit because we do try really hard to communicate. Now there is, there are timeframes, right? So on Thursday, in fact, it comes out and we have to address it on Tuesday night. That does happen for sure. You know, we gotta be, we gotta be really mindful and invested in what we're doing. And I know you can see by the, by the room here tonight and, and there's forty people online as well. So there's lots of people who are interested in, in, you know, taking advantage of that communication. But if you got other ways, I definitely want to hear them. So. All right. Robert, I'll let you go ahead and address the maintenance plan, which I believe is, he's addressing the road one. I'll let you handle that. And then also how much spend to that step. And then we, we just kind of address communication a little bit. And, and I, you know, I don't tend to agree with the road maintenance portion over the last five years, but then, you know, everybody sees it a little differently. So we'll go ahead and let you address that as well. And I'll mute.
All right. So road maintenance, again, it's hard for me to comment on that. The only way that I know of when there's an issue is when residents come to me and let me know what issues. Whether we have washouts and I see the washouts, whenever we have the B or public works out there, we make sure that we identify them. And then we come over the plans on how to secure those. But as far as, you know, the various maintenance issues that you all see, I'm not privy to seeing that because the only time that I hear something is when something goes really bad. And that's when we put on the projects list, if you're not aware, we actually meet with all the engineers as well as council member staff, who's the Houston Roads liaison, to make sure that we go through all these issues that come up and we try to correct them as much, as much as possible and as fast as possible. So if there's an issue, I think everybody here has their cell phone on, right? Email address, just let me know. I'll make sure that we correct it as fast as possible. We are in the process of hiring a public works director who will be putting that out for advertising probably next week. We are making sure that the person that we do hire has a lot of knowledge and experience when it comes to not only dirt roads, but also stormwater systems and the EDS compliance. If you're asking about waiting on a plan or are we waiting on a maintenance plan that takes a look at, sorry, John, holistically, the entire town, it's kind of hard. If you look at every single roadway, every single intersection, if you come up with one plan for the entire roadway, you're not even able to do it because every road is different. There's different basins, there's different topographies. And some have swales, some don't have swales. So again, coming up with an overall maintenance plan is very difficult to do, but we're gonna try our best to try to do that. With the current configuration of what we have, and then once we have projects that are completed, we'll make sure that we take care of those through a maintenance program that's built into the actual scopes. Question three was, how much does this can cost? Trying to get to my notes.
Sorry. I have a ear that says eighty thousand per design. Ninety thousand per design for Bessie Street. That also is not forgetting that includes portions that we have already kind of discussed tonight about potentially removing, which would be like maintenance plans that portion. So.
The ideas again are, they have different items in there that we can remove or we have different deliverables that they have to provide to us before we move to the next task. The one I'm looking at is the first idea that's fourteen tasks in it. And then we wouldn't move from task one until we approved something to task two. And then also, as I said, FEMA doesn't approve the actual design. And if I wanted to move into current construction plans and simply actually get that money built up, we're ready to fund this. And again, as I said before, the reason that we're trying to move forward with this is to say, okay, we have a design and we hope that FEMA will accept it. And if they accept it, then there's gonna be those streets attached and we actually are able to fund the entire project and repair the entire basin. The issue refers to the forest that was designed by Michael Orr, who's in the period of use. Again, there's always pros and cons to dealing with, you know, stormwater and dirt roadways. You know, if there's a storm, there's gonna go somewhere. And the way that that one was designed was a French drain system and not an open swell system to capture the the water that's going down there. But you have to understand that dirt's gonna go somewhere. It always is. You know, whether it goes to a swell, whether it goes to a retention area, whether it goes to a pipe, it's gonna go somewhere. It's just the laws of business. So when that system was in place, we had the previous season that made it in twenty-five years. So it was pretty much, you know, just an issue, but upon issue, upon issue. Now we actually have the residents that live on that stretch saying that there actually isn't a problem and the system's working. But we have hired Kim Lee Horn associates to actually go out there and create a redundancy, which is all on these swell systems. But it also includes and keeps the piping system that's current in there. Because if you put in pipes, and especially if you're gonna crush any system, the, the sand is gonna, the dirt is gonna go into those pipes. It's gonna clog with that French drain system. It's not able to purr. And, you know, unless you can eventually maintain that, maybe suck all that sand out, of course, you know, we try to do as much as possible. But again, if it builds up and builds up, then it's not gonna be able to purr and get to its final destination. That's why it's also flooding in the front. And then also with the topography masses, reduce a lot of ponding and flooding in the rear of the backyards. And that's just from neighbors, neighbor, not from West Second Avenue or First Forest. But we are working on the issue now. And actually, the town council, we worked with conceptual design of that, which we brought back to town council to fix that issue. But they're gonna be adding additional pipe and then adding some additional swell systems over there to make sure that we're taking care of that first portion. And Michael Orr is doing the, actually, Kim Lee Horn's doing the period review on West Second Avenue for Kim Lee Horn associates because a portion of that project does science of the First Forest project. And messaging, we have the website. We have Facebook, Instagram, tweets next door. We have an app that it can get the app. It actually sends you notifications instantly. We've now implemented, we've, we've done door knockers. Now we've implemented, if a project is going to possibly impact a project, we have to notify everybody within five hundred feet. So I'm not sure how much more messaging or communication we can do. There has to be a little bit of burden on the actual residents themselves to make sure that they're engaged and aware of what's going on in their community. Because I can tell you right now with what we have as far as communication capabilities, you know, I would put us against, you know, Winter Park, Winter Garden and all those other municipalities on having the type of technology that we have right now, even going further than that by actually basically knocking on doors to tell them, hey, by the way, there's a project coming up. You might wanna, you know, be part of this Zoom meeting or part of this workshop. So again, any other suggestions, we'd love to hear about. But I think we have on both of the answers, trying to get communication out there. For me again, you guys have one more than this. You're up there. No, no, you can do your time. But again, Mayor, as we said before, the purpose of that one is we wanted to engage the people that were directly impacted first, give them the most amount of time that they have. Because if you live on that street, you're probably gonna have a lot more questions, a lot more concerns about that one street getting lived on than somebody that is six blocks down. So that.
Sorry, but I don't have social media. I don't have Facebook, Twitter, anything else, Instagram, any of those other things. Neither do the clients that I have in town. The Hinshaw's. That's why I apologize at the beginning. It's like I should have checked the website and checked your agenda. Okay? But the Hinshaw's who are directly affected by this project were the ones that texted me Tuesday or Thursday night at 10:30 saying that they had just heard about it. And did I know about a door hanger that was placed on their property? You're in Georgia.
I'm not gonna comment from the audience. All right, listen, that's not. We could educate a lot. Does every, you know, is it perfect? No. But I am telling you that as far as musicality, communicating, communicating with their business, you are not gonna see more of this. I promise.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but if I have to take a message from Brandon, thank you so much. If I have to take a message on Thursday night at 10:30 and I send it to twenty residents that I know of that would be very interested in hearing about this information and having the voice in it, who I'm sure are right now on your Zoom call, okay, who know nothing about it. There needs to be a standard in town that when a major project is underway, that there are other methods of communication that maybe are a little bit more duty more historic, like a letter to our mailbox, that we can then read and see, oh, this is a major project. We should get involved and let's help the councilman make the appropriate decision. But this thing has been, it seems, like a very speedy process, especially in the last seventy-two hours that has changed and rechanged. And people are trying to respond and be supportive of you all.
That's why everyone is here. So let's go through the process tonight. And again, if you have different ways that we can communicate, it's fine. If you have different ways you can communicate, then, then let us know. We try very, very hard to be very transparent. Thank you. Our next person, Stephanie Boyd for public comment.
Hi, Stephanie Boyd, 228 Magnolia Street. I have nothing formal to say. I don't have anything written down. I'm, I'm a little bit. I didn't really know about all the details either, but I just want to say I absolutely love Windermere. Moved here about five years ago. The beautiful oak trees, the dirt roads. It has been my happy place. Whenever I tell people I moved to Orlando, I love the simplicity. I love the character. I love the uniqueness. And I just pray that y'all keep it simple. You know, please don't change the dirt roads, the trees, the, I mean, whenever you come into Windermere, you're just like, wow, this is so awesome. You know, you're, you're in Orlando and you have this little piece of heaven over here that you're actually getting to enjoy. So I just ask that you please take time to assess everything that you're doing so you don't do anything in a hurry and in haste, just like, you know, you measure it twice and you cut once. So, um, thank you for everything that you do and have a good night.
Thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate that. And, you know, I, I, I know I will speak for all of us up here. That's exactly why we're here and that's exactly how we feel. You know, we're keepers of something that's super important and special to us. So you know, we want to make sure that we do the right thing too. And, and, you know, that we're looking forward, but also making sure that we're super respectful to the past. So that's our challenge. And, and it's a heavy one, especially on items like this. Thank you again for your comment. Thank you. Frank, thank you, sir.
Right, says nine thirty-five Oakdale. I am. I walked in a door fully expecting to have an agenda there that I could take notes and do along, and it wasn't there. So I've now had to cross out and black out so much stuff on my hand, I can't read. So right after the conversation, I started writing down what it said in the agenda, what I was gonna respond to as far as that's concerned. Then I hear everything's changed and we backed down on all that stuff. So I had to start scratching stuff out and trying to write new thoughts and notes. My, so here's where I'm at. I, I know I didn't receive notification until I was told by a neighbor that this project at Eighth and Best, we extended all the way to Tintum and Oakdale, Oakdale to Tintum, which is in front of my house. So, which I'm glad I learned of that, if that is the case. I really don't know, but that's what I was told. But I'm glad I learned of it because I'm glad to hear all of this going on because I do think things need to change. It sounds like we're heading in the right direction. It's a whole lot for everyone that's here and on Zoom to take it. When Robert was going through his stuff, I was like, wait, is he talking about Eighth and Bessie or Forest? And, and I just think we need to take a breath and we need to table this and talk about it next week or whenever your next meeting is, so we can all have a chance to, to review things, figure this out, understand it better as residents and possibly you all in the council. And I know many of you have been involved in it, but it's just to have a two o'clock change. I have no sound, but I'm at three minutes up. So take it to two o'clock and have an opportunity for everybody to hear about it and figure it out and, and understand it is impossible. And one other comment is, I love Kim Lee Horn. I have a lot of respect for her. I know that they do great work. I don't know if dirt roads are their thing. They claim that they have a guy somewhere that they can get to and talk to and all that stuff, but just seems like Michael Orr was our guy. So whether we have a I think we ought to look at the pricing, especially through the reduced scope of work that we're discussing. Either whether we do it with Kim Lee Horn or whether we do, you know, bid it out. And I don't know if we're required by my contract to keep with Kim Lee Horn, but I would like to see someone else consider it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Free. We appreciate that. Hey, Frank, did you get a, did you get a door hanger or no? We're gonna get, we'll, we'll figure that out.
No door hanger.
All right. We will have to figure that one out. You know, part of the engineering piece is that we were, you know, Mike, Mike was our engineer for many, many years and there, you know, there was a couple of things that folks were frustrated with that as well. So, you know, we felt it was a good idea to make a tweak and a change there and, you know, kind of try out a different way to go and we're not locked into anything. But, you know, we, we, we came to, we came to Kimberly Horn looking for some different things. So, you know, we'll see. We'll talk about that as well. Did you want to comment? I see, I see you working on the mic there.
Yeah, it was just a, I guess, comment was another last minute change. And the reason being is if we're gonna look at this as a whole basin, my understanding technically is another basin, you know, from the Bessie one. But we have a property that is just south of Ninth that's had some flooding issues. So if we're gonna take care of this whole basin holistically, as John would say, you know, to make sure that we, you know, can fix that. you know, to make sure that we, you know, can fix that problem down there, you know, which does involve going a little bit further north on Oakdale too, because there's a lot of water flow heading southbound on that road.
Thank you, Councilperson. I also, I'll just remind everybody real quick and go ahead. When we, you know, began the meeting, one of the things that we did talk about too is the ability to table this for some thought and further discussion with those changes. So I don't want anyone to feel like something's being crammed down. If it doesn't fit in for what we're talking about up here or we want to stew on it, then we have that option. That was one of the five options that we talked about as we got the meeting started. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the representative of the council staff said is that the adjectives that were made were made on October 27th. So, you know, we really haven't had much time to, you know, to do a door knobber or anything else. You know, again, and we try to communicate as much as possible. But those changes were made at night, I think you got out of here probably around 11:00 at night. So again, we were sort of getting information out there as fast as possible. But we did want to take a look at some of the areas that weren't included in the original scope because one of us, Ken and Froggy and other people, there's some issues that want to resolve as part of this.
Teresa, can you hear us now? Will you give me a thumbs up if you can hear us? Now I can't see Teresa. Okay, she's giving me, she's giving me a double thumb.
All right, again, we're doing our best with the technology.
Doing our best with the technology piece. It is. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Next is Anime Clowns. And I believe, Anime, are you on here or is it, there you are. You know, with masks.
You know, with masks.
I can't tell whether somebody's smiling.
Hi, I just, um, I just wanted to say hello. I know I've been gone for a while. I also wanted to add a few comments. I've written at least one letter, I think more, I've lost track. So I'm not going to go over everything that I've written. I'm 632 Butler Street. I live at the bottom of Butler Street, right before Fernwood Park. Water flows down and I'm concerned that my property is at risk. That the town helped out a couple of years ago and put some burmings up along my property because I was literally having a river flow in front of my house, coming into my garage, disrupting my power, it moved my pavers around. But it was, it was a temporary fix. I would like to see a more global fix. I've been in my home for 33 years. Stormwater has always been a problem in one way or another. I resonate with a lot of the comments here. Paul Girding said, leave it alone. Anyone who knows me, I usually say leave it alone. We're good like we are. I love Windermere. I love our trees. I love our sand streets. I love everything about it. I would like to say, leave it alone. I also like to say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The problem is, it's broke. It is broke. And I figured, I wanted to come up here as a representative of a, of a resident who's having direct problems as a result of the drainage. And again, to ask you that we need to do something. And I totally agree with measure twice, cut once. But at some point, we have to stop measuring and we have to cut. And I know there's a petition that's gone around that says, save our roads, you know, keep them narrow, save our trees. Again, I completely support that. I support my neighbors. But have we canvassed all of Windermere to ask all of Windermere, do you want to be assessed personally for this drainage? Because I'm not sure what all of Windermere would say. So I'm going to urge you to see if we can find a way to take these public funds to solve our problem. And once again, thank you for all the care and thought that you're putting into this. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Anime. We appreciate that. Next up, I believe we have someone who's on Zoom, Tracy Mitchell. Tracy, are you available? Tracy Mitchell, are you available for a public comment on Zoom? She have her hand up. I see, here she goes.
Hey, sorry, can you hear me now?
Good. Tracy Mitchell, can you hear us?
Hey, yes, can you hear me?
Very good.
Can you hear me? Okay, hey, I just want to thank all of you, the town staff, the town council and all the residents that have been so involved in this. I'll just say that I'm a little bit more confused now than I was going in because of all the changes. And I agree with a lot of people that I like the town just how it is. One of the main things I was coming in was some questions about the FEMA grant and questions about the engineering company that has been hired, who I hear is fantastic, but has been on record saying they've never done a project like this. So it concerns me that you would hire somebody that's never done a project like this. And if that ends up not working, how do we know it's going to work? There's no guarantees it's going to work. And I just think there's still a lot, a lot on the table to consider. And I believe and agree with some people that maybe you should just take a step back and really think about everything because it does seem like it keeps changing. I understand that plans change. And like you said, Mayor, you know, they do. It's because you're asking questions and you're getting input and I understand that. But I just want to say that I think everyone should just really think about it before you make a hard decision on taking grant money on something that we're not even really sure is going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. We appreciate your comment this evening. I, let's clarify briefly. So I want to make sure that we, so Kimberly Horn, they know about drainage projects. They've done a lot of them. They're a pretty big engineering company. And also, we don't have any feeling this isn't going to work. Okay, he's not, no, I just want to make sure. I do hear Tracy's concerns though about, you know, some of the, the tweaks and changes. And I think she echoes what we've heard from other residents as well. So we definitely hear that. Thank you, Tracy. Next up, we have, I have Kristi Huffman next. Kristi, are you online?
I am online. Can you hear me? I'm online. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
Oh, great. Okay. So a couple of things, I'll, I'll be brief. I will speak for Mark and myself just for the sake of time because I know it's getting late. I think the first thing I would like to have.
Second, we lost you there.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so I, I will speak for Mark. I had also signed up, but I'll speak for both of us for the sake of time. First and foremost, I, I think I would like to ask you, Mayor O'Brien, and the town council members specifically, and also our town manager, Mr. Smith, to really be open to the possibility that this.
Kristi, I'm sorry, can you pause one second so we make sure we hear your comments?
Sure. Okay, can you hear me? Yes?
And go ahead and let's try this one more time. Sorry.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I got kicked off. I'm on one second.
That's okay. Let me, just give me a go signal. Can.
We're working on getting back connected, Kristi, if you'll give us one minute. I apologize.
Okay, of course.
Kristi's on the big screen. She doesn't even know yet.
Oh, wow. Yay, I, I got so dressed up for you. Okay, so.
Hopefully she did her HD makeup.
What I would like to say to everyone that has a vote on this or any input in this is to be very, very, very clear that the FEMA grant may not be a match for what the residents of this town are clearly and overwhelmingly stating. So there is a possibility that this grant may just not match what we want as residents. And I understand it's money and we always want money, but it may just not be a match. Second of all, we have touched on maintenance. My issue with us moving forward with any plan by any design firm is we have not maintained the plans that we have. I live at 511 Magnolia Street and, you know, we have seen ditches, drainage, paved parts of roads. And, and some of those things just aren't working possibly because they're not being maintained. So before we can move forward with something new, I feel like we need to maintain what we have already put in place. And we're not doing that. And, and I haven't seen a plan to do that. So it's very difficult to vote on something different. Also, I think that, you know, we, we've talked about, okay, now we'll just do a stormwater plan. It, it won't involve widening the roads. That is not the issue for me. The issue for me are the swells and the burms. I do not want a 14 foot swell in front of my house or in front of any of my neighbors' houses. I have spent the last week and a half, two weeks driving around and looking at swells. And Robert, you just said the dirt has to go somewhere. And you're absolutely right. The dirt is going to go in the swells. It's going to go, the leaves are going to go in the swells. The trash is going to go in the swells. And we are going to be mucking out very unsightly swells. And that's my opinion. I'm not an engineer. But I know that when they pave the portion of Magnolia that's below my house, the most unsightly part of that is that the, the dirt washes down, covers the concrete, and it just looks awful all the time. So I, I just have an issue with this entire swell system, more so than, than what we were talking about possibly widening the roads a little bit. For me, it is the burms, the swells and the, um, the easement that we're talking about and that those have to be maintained as grass. I just think it's, it's not a good plan and it's going to be unsightly. I certainly would not want it in front of my house. I also just would ask at this point that, you know, it's not comforting as a resident in the latest thing that I've read where the wording is the, we will limit the impact as much as possible. I have no idea what that means, as much as possible. And I think that's the problem. We don't have a clear plan. We don't have anything that we can review and vote on. And this seems to be constantly kind of being jammed at us and we need to take a real big step back. It's a big project. It's a lot of money. It's, in my opinion, a lot more project than what is needed to fix the issues that need to be fixed. Yes, we need to address the couple of residents that are having issues. But this is a huge undertaking for our town. And it's something that overwhelmingly, I feel, as you can see by the letters, the people, the attendance, the engagement, people don't want this. So if you're sitting on our town council and you're getting ready to vote for this and to move forward and spend our money, just know overwhelmingly, people do not want this. They do not want this plan. They do not want this space taken up in the easements. They don't want the swells. They don't want the burms. So I don't know, I, that is very clear to me as a, as a fellow resident. And I would think by this point, it's very clear to every single person that has a say so in this process. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank goodness, I've been, we appreciate that. Next up is Teresa Myers. Teresa, I need you to unmute. Try that.
Can you hear me now? Hello, my name is Teresa Schretzman Myers. I'm at 2713 Tryon Place, Windermere, Florida. I served on the tree board since 2004, post hurricanes, and was involved in all those FEMA grants. I agree with Christine, we're looking at the wrong grants. Instead of doing gray infrastructure grants, we should be doing green infrastructure grants. And those are in our urban forestry grants. We should, our last forestry management plan we did was like 2004. And I think we're trying to take gray infrastructure grants, putting in non-permeable pipes, gray pipes, to manage something that can't be managed on a sandy street town. We have permeable surface for a reason. We have canopy for a reason. That's to manage stormwater runoff so it doesn't go into the Butler chain. Just one 36 inch light handles 28,552 gallons a year. And if we're talking about taking out large live oaks and large longleaf pines, which handle 4,0473 gallons a year, putting back a little tree in a berm and a swell isn't going to replace what those 400 year old live oaks and what those 300 year old longleaf pines can already do for us using green infrastructure. They manage runoff, they handle it on the leaves, they take it out, they don't let it go into the Butler chain and they put it back up in the air. And putting in pipes that affect these trees, putting in burns and swells that affect these trees and reduce them and take them out, puts even more pressure and more silt and, and more garbage into the Butler chain. So instead of doing gray infrastructure grants, let's focus on green infrastructure plant, uh, grants. Look at some of what the other cities are doing in Atlanta and other small towns that are using green infrastructure to manage stormwater runoff. Why are we going after gray infrastructure grants? It's a very good question. So let's, again, think outside the box. Let's go after green infrastructure, urban forestry, 50/50 grants. And there's a 2020 grant on the books right now with the state of Florida that will even phase you in for the first three years. And you can stack those grants depending on the streets that you do. You'll notice if you walk around the town of Windermere, the areas that we have the most problems are where we've had deforestation from lots of trees, from either storms or from overdevelopment. All that rain is coming off the roofs, off of driveways, paved surfaces. It has no place to go but down. So let's trade green infrastructure for gray infrastructure grants. Let's change our grants and the type of grants we're going after. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa, for your published comment.
Mayor, we have two hands of Joe, James Carr, and somebody that's on Galaxy 3.
Can we find out who's on, we'll let Joe go in just a second. I just want to find out who's on that Galaxy 3.
I'll try to figure out who's on Galaxy, but.
All right. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor. Mayor, you mentioned that one of the options was to table this and, and that was at the beginning of the, of the session where the folks on Zoom just couldn't hear very much. So I'm, uh, you know, that would have probably saved an hour or so of the meeting if, if I had heard that. Because I, I think we, there, there's no way that I can make any, I can have any opinion on, on what's going on just based on the changes that were made recently. I mean, I've been, I've been on all the workshop calls and all the, you know, chatting with, with the staff and, and others about, you know, about the stormwater project and the road barriers. And, and I don't necessarily understand the hybrid very well. So I don't necessarily think that we could make a decision. Tabling it probably was the best decision and we probably could have saved a lot of people a bunch of time. I know you're gathering information. If I were to say something, I think, well, two things. One is hopefully we're recording it in more than one place because the folks on Zoom lost about half of the meeting. So hopefully there are minutes locally that we could maybe stitch together and get one, one good transcript of this. Secondly, you know, I remember John at a previous meeting saying that, you know, one of the problems we're having now that we didn't have years ago is the fact that we've got larger homes and the same size lots. And I'm kind of with Teresa in a way where, you know, A, you know, we're, we're removing a lot of trees. But, but more so, I don't know if all of the homeowners are taking care of their own water. And, you know, I know that was a requirement when I renovated my house. And I've got a lake in front of my house that, that basically stores all my water after every, every rain. But that's not the case. I see it, you know, it's, it's traveling down my road, causing some major ruts and puddles and things like that. But if I had a choice and, and if we're gathering input just generally because there's no real plan I can, I can have an opinion on, I would say that I would like, I would rather keep the ruts and, you know, and the roads the same size than do something that would change, you know, the charm of where I live. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, could we give you our street address for the. Joe, could we give your, um, street address for the record?
Yep, sorry. 327 East 8th. I'm in the corner of 8th and Bessie.
All right. All right, yeah, because the, um, the only thing that could make tonight more fun would be a Zoom bomb. That would just be like the cherry on top. All right, council. Obviously we've heard a lot from the staff. Uh, we've heard a lot from the residents. Um, I know you all have done your own reading, uh, and research as well, um, and have met with, uh, many of the, many of the residents in town. I think what we'd like to do tonight, so it gets a little tricky here because we got, we got two agenda items, but we've got about five options. So we're gonna, if council will give me a little leeway here, um, I think what I'd like to get is kind of a general temperature check from, um, all council members, uh, to get a little feel where we're at. Make sure that we have any questions, uh, that we get those answers for council. Um, and we can then have some discussion. We're gonna have to pace ourselves a little bit because of the, the Zoom piece. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, Andy will love me. I'm gonna go ahead and throw it to, uh, councilperson Williams. Because you guys online have been, uh, you've been nice and quiet. So we want to make sure that we get that input, uh, from you as well. Go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, I hope you can hear me. It's been a lot. Um, I see, I hear tons of residents with a lot of concerns and wanting a plan. With that being said, the only way to get us a, a better conceptual and, and something that's got more definition on sizes is to move forward. In, in my opinion, grant money has nothing to do with this at all. Whether we get it or not, doesn't matter. We have a stormwater project or storm, stormwater issue. There's many homeowners that are drastically affected by it. But with a direction that we need to go with, we need to come up with a plan for this. Whether it's enhancing what we already have, maintenance, whatever, but we have to move forward. With something. We can't keep kicking this down the road. We've been at this for five months now. At least what it feels like five years. Um, I've got, you know, three hours today alone, two hours yesterday, meeting with people. Uh, walking the streets, I, I drive the dirt roads after every rain. Um, we see the water that sits and we see where it runs. So, uh, you know, my temperature, we, we need to do something. We can't just back up, um, wait a week. I'm fine with that. Um, but I think we, we cannot just back up and throw everything we've done so far out the window.
Thank you, councilperson Williams. Did you have any specific questions in terms of?
I did not. No, I.
Either the project or, um, direction in terms of?
I, I have, I have blown Robert's phone. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to overtalk with, over, talk over you. I have blown Robert's phone up and emails and, and same with John for the last week. Uh, I'm good on questions.
Thank you, councilperson. Councilperson Andrew, your thoughts and comments? Any questions also specifically to get addressed via Zoom?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll say that I'm fine with us having some more time to engage residents, especially that now there's been this campaign and people have been spreading the word and, you know, admittedly, there are some, some advancements we can make with communication. But I think that really, I'll, I'll say, I honestly feel like, um, town staff and council have done a really good job of trying to reach out to people. Um, so, so I, I, well, I appreciate that there can always be improvements in communication. I still feel like all of us, um, especially for those who are unpaid, like those who are, serve on committees will understand too. These are, you know, unpaid positions. A lot of people, I myself don't have another job, but other people do. And they're still reaching out to everyone and making every, every chance to meet with residents. So, so I would have everyone recognize that as I do. I, I can't in good conscience not do anything to fix the issues that some of our neighbors, Ms. Clance, spoke this evening about, you know, the flooding issues that she's had. We do have to do some things to help with stormwater. And although some neighbors might not be experiencing issues and they're in the basin in the project area and so in front of their house, there's not an issue. The, the problem is, isn't just, it doesn't lie within one person's yard or one person's, the right of way in front of one house. It has to do with the basin in its entirety. And so we have to look at things that might create some uncomfort in, in some areas to help fix some things for people who are really experiencing pain or have in the past. So, so I too feel like we need to do something. I, I don't know that, and, and I've heard so many neighbors say, can't we do a simpler plan? Can't we just do spot fixes here? Can't we, I know somebody who engineered, you know, a project for the town seven in the seventies. And, you know, they know how to fix this. So can't we do that with, you know, a much, much more limited amount of money? Um, and it doesn't have to be that complex and, you know, but, but then no one comes with an actual person who's willing to say, yes, I'll put my name on a plan. And, you know, I mean, there, we need to have some engineering standards in place. Something that's defendable if we do have an issue that's left us to vulnerability or, you know, risking, um, legal repercussions, those kinds of things. So, so there needs to be something more than just, we're going to create a fix here and fix there. There needs to be a bigger plan. But again, that said, I would like us to have some more time to engage with residents. And I also don't feel comfortable with us saying as council that we're gonna approve the idea of saying, go forth and provide another IPO, um, without seeing it first. So I want to see what the next iteration would be before taking a vote to approve, you know, going to the next step. I want to see the new IPOs. I want the residents to have an opportunity to see that as well. And for us to continue to engage in discussion, that might push it off to the next meeting, not the next week. I think is a little bit more realistic. I also think that when we talk about a maintenance program, that it needs to be a lot better defined. I can see a maintenance program easily being something that's produced by a firm that just says, well, here are common, you know, engineering standards that you should do. But they don't actually spell out in plain man's terms, on this block, you need to do this. And on this block, you need to do that. And I think we need something that easily any person can step into that's in public works at any level. And they're going to be able to have some kind of marching orders or some way to fix a road section after a stormwater event. And also I would like to see maintenance program have an annual checkup component where the original, um, engineer or some other engineer is engaged at least maybe once a year or whatever to see that these systems and, and features are being maintained. So, um, I don't think that, other than that, I have any real questions. I just wanted to state those things and then, um, say that I, I really feel it's important for us to have an opportunity to see the new IPOs before we, before we approve them. And to have at least accompanied, um, with those IPOs, I'd like to have some, I don't know that we can have the kind of concepts that we had before the, the charrettes, but something that gives a little bit more definition to the neighbors as to how the, the project might look versus just a, an IPO and kind of the language of what the task order is at hand. I'd like to see a little bit more of, so now we've decided not to do road widths. That's the direction we take. What are we gonna do block by block? What might that look like? And then neighbors can understand, you know, where they might want to argue or ask for less impact to their particular area. That's a lot. So it wasn't, it wasn't that well thought out, but it kind of, um, it kind of formulated itself over the course of the evening and listening to everyone's comments. That's all.
Thank you, councilperson Andrew. So, um, just so I kind of understand, it's, it sounds to me like you're interested in potentially, um, working on concept or design, but would require or request a specific IPO, uh, to address the differences between what we have in front of us tonight and what you envisioned. Is that an accurate summation?
What I, what I would like to see is, I would like to, in the past, I think we've had a couple of instances where we've had an IPO before us and we don't get to see the next iteration of the IPO that, um, we talk in our town council meeting, we provide direction to town staffs. Town staff then uses that as permission to rewrite an IPO that's then provided to our vendor. And we don't see the IPO. It's just supposed to be kind of this, this trust, which I, I think is a fine idea and concept that we would have this trust that town staff will take our direction and then create the new IPO and eliminate some of the inefficiencies of waiting for another town council meeting. But I feel like in a case like this, it is so important and the neighbors are so clearly impassioned about it that to have trust but verify is important. So I would like to see another IPO that we vote on versus voting tonight to say, we think you've hurt us. Now translate that into an IPO. I just want to be assured.
Okay, I think I've got it then. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to hear her and also, um, sorry, Jessica Lee, that I got handed a note late. So I just saw this. Um, you had also signed up for public comment when you came in. Did you want to speak as well? It's your call. Okay, and then we'll, um, go ahead to Sarah. Jessica, if you'll give us, uh, your name for the record as well as, um, your address. Thank you.
Transparency, transparency at all. But also when it comes to water quality and what you guys want to do with the lakes and the roads and whatnot. For instance, um, probably about six, seven, don't remember the exact date. I have it, um, on a video and photos that has a date on it. But we witnessed the company that you guys used for, um, pumping out all the drains around town. We witnessed them taking whatever they pumped from all the storm drains on Second Avenue, First Avenue, everywhere. Came back to our side of Lake Butler where the old built houses are, which I think everyone around here knows what area I'm talking about, Second and Farm. And they took the hose from the big truck, put it into the lake and just started dumping all of the nasty stuff from the storm drains directly into the lake. So when we went out there and asked him about it, he brought up Mr. O'Brien's name, Mr. Smith's name, and the other guy who used to be the head of the public works department. Scott Brown, whatever his name is. And without any of us saying anything, those were the three names that he brought up. So we told him, you gotta stop this. This is disgusting. There's trash going in there. It smells, all of this. So I personally called the Florida EPA people, asked them about it. And they said that the town of Windermere did not have approval to do any of that. And that before it gets dumped into the lake, they have to actually like do some processing. And he explained the situation to me. So basically, there's a reason why. There's a lot of distress. We have photos and videos of this. So when we hear about water issues like Bessie, you know, whatever, it makes us as residents who've seen something like that happen, go wait a minute, what's actually happening here? So us as residents need to be assured 110% that what everybody wants to do here is actually going to be for the good of the lakes, for the good of the town, for what the residents want. And we need to see it on paper. We need to see the studies that you guys said, you know, like with Lake Bessie, saying that there's a water quality issue. I think that we need to actually see those studies. We need to have that, you know, online, on social media, maybe email to people, um, all of that. But we need to actually see that physical study so we can understand it, which would also in turn ultimately help you guys because you would understand it better. But, you know, something like that with dumping into the lake, that's not okay. And it was just weird to us that he brought up these three names. And we were told that you guys were the ones that told him to do it. So. Yeah, with no permits, with nothing, is what the state told me and what the guys who are doing the dumping told us. So it was just very, very weird. And the guy who was dumping told us that we could, he could do it if he wanted to, but his truck was parked along our property. So we told him no. And it was very scary. So it was like a slap in the face to all of us. Because I think we don't really truly believe that you are wanting to do what's best for the lakes. I think there's a political reason behind all of this. And I think that's what 80% of the town feels too. So just keep that in mind because there's a lot of things we're all watching here.
Is the, any of these?
Okay, if, if not, we can make sure we put that information on the website.
Video or contact by resident relative to the trucks de-watering, you know? We've had people name dropping me and you and other people that didn't even work for the town. So that happens quite often. I can reassure everybody that we don't authorize anything that's going to be done illegally. What they're supposed to do is water, what they do is suck up a silt from all those, um, structures. Meaning all the dirt and sand, they suck them out. And then instead of taking half water, half dirt to the landfill or wherever they have to take it and you're paying for water. So what they do is they'll dump it into the water into a retention area. That's what they're supposed to do. So if they didn't do that, then we would definitely raise the concern and make sure that they are doing it. So again, you know, when these issues come up, we address them immediately. Or we'd be under a consent order by EPP if we did it. So I can, you know, rest assured with residents that if any complaints like that come along, we make sure that we address those swiftly. Um, but they're allowed to de-water into retention areas. Now, it looks like milk sometimes, but they are allowed by the permit to go ahead and do that. And then the same ones that Orange County utilizes for the war for their, um, stormwater systems as well.
So typically.
I mean, it was more than just silt. It was trash. It was disgusting. That's something that we just all need to be aware of.
Did, did you, um, contact anyone from town?
Um, yeah, my dad did. And we also called the state because my dad was not very, he didn't really trust after things that had happened. He wasn't really trusting what the answer would be that we would get from the town. So he, and I contacted the state and to make sure that we had all the facts before he went ahead and contacted the town.
And, and that's fine. So you could contact anyone who you would like. I totally understand. But if, if you let us know, we can, we can probably enact some quick change. So I, I didn't hear about it. So as long as staff knows, that's fine.
Nothing stopped. So my mom went out there and yelled at the guy and said, he can just drop off from the yard and let's do the dumping. And then we saw somebody coming out of state drive out there and I was like, well, we have to save one of his trucks. And he put it over there. He pulled us there.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that. All right, Teresa, I see that. Yeah, that's my bad. I should have had her come back to the podium. Sarah is, uh, available for public comment on Zoom. We are final public comment for this evening.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm Sarah Lopez. I'm at 110 Forest Street. There are a few times that inherent risks has, um, have been, has been mentioned by, um, several of the people in this call. And I believe that at this time, there should not be inherent risks at this time. And based on the experience that you have mentioned several times also during this call that we have, we need to make informed decisions. Based on the changes and all the changes that have taken place in the last 72 hours, it doesn't seem that you can make informed decisions at this time. I also would like to know, because John has spoken several times in this call, um, well, on this call one time and several times in previous calls, if him and Scott have their PE license. Because I'm thinking that if they were the engineer of record, I'm sure that they really would try to minimize those risks. Robert, I am surprised about your comments that you only hear about maintenance issues when something goes really bad. Because in all honesty, this is something that has been mentioned constantly in every single meeting I have attended. And just in this call, multiple, multiple residents have mentioned it. When it comes to Kimley Horn, I definitely also have a lot of respect for them. They are an amazing engineering firm. However, they don't seem to have the experience with dirt roads. So although they definitely have experience with, and a lot of experience with stormwater, their roads does not seem to know their, that doesn't seem to be their expertise. And also, as there have been concerns with Mike in the past, I'm not sure where these are the engineer firms involved in these projects. I think we need to work with an engineering firm that can provide the confidence needed to all of you, the mayor, the councilman and woman, and the residents. As always, I want to thank you all for your time today.
Thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate that. Do you want to address any of those items, Robert or John?
Can't hear speaker.
To any other properties in around town. Just so you know, I wear many hats. And one of those tonight is going to be IT.
All right, we will, we're going to get back to our council comments and questions and temperature here. I, I, I will address the political part. Maybe I'm not smart enough to know what the political gain in all of this is, but maybe somebody will help me out with that. You know, we live here just like everybody else and we want to make sure that things are right. Everybody has different skill sets up here, up here and online here and, you know, but, you know, I think that it's, it's pretty unanimous that we all care for the lakes. And we know that the lakes make, are a big part of what makes us unique and what makes us a desirable place to live. So I definitely want to make sure that everybody does understand that. I think that they do. Councilperson McKinley, do you have any thoughts and comments, sir? You don't want to do your comments now? Okay. Councilperson Martini.
We good to go?
Yes.
First, I would like to thank our residents for their participation in this endeavor. I've gotten to know many of you much better than I ever wanted to. But you're all great people and I appreciate you guys meeting with me and sharing your concerns and telling me what you think we should do. I share a lot of those concerns. I got 129 emails yesterday and today saying that you don't want grant money to be used to fix our road problems because you don't want to be beholden to the federal government or these standards that, you know, we may not be able to walk back from. And it's a, it's a valid point. You know, when I close my eyes and I look at these plans that were submitted initially for the road fixes, you know, I just can't imagine. It, it reminds me of a, a new subdivision or, you know, someplace like that. It's not, it's not Windermere. And I've said from the start, if we can find a way to use the grant money and keep the charm and the character and the ambiance of the town and something that the residents are amenable to, then let's do it. You know, we, we shouldn't, our, our priority shouldn't be to find ways to spend the grant money. Our priority should be to maintain the charm and character of the town. But on the other hand, you know, no one's house or garage needs to be, or deserves to be flooded. You know, that, that stuff should have been addressed long ago and needs to be addressed on an ongoing basis. But on the other, other hand, you know, we shouldn't push that burden across the street or up the hill. Everybody needs to do their share. So, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to find a way to, to actually make this work, a compromise. I do think we need more time because, you know, I learned about the adjusted Ninth and Bessie IPO on Thursday evening. And that doesn't allow enough time for me to read that 129 pages and then communicate with the residents, get their feedback, that type of thing. It's just not enough time. It's two and a half business days, three business days. And you, you throw in a Hail Mary change at two o'clock this afternoon and all bets are off. You know, the residents, the, the, the lack of trust among the residents right now is at an all time high. I think that's because, you know, we've, we've been asking for, you know, a maintenance plan. And we know the maintenance hasn't been done for a long time. And I, I think ever since I got on the council, I've, we've been asking for a maintenance plan. I think it started, you know, when I started on the council, and we still don't have one for the existing structures. So I know it's tough for everybody to envision jumping ahead and spending a lot of money when we can't even take care of what we got now. And we need to. I mean, I know we have specific problems, but there's, there's general stuff that really needs to be done to prevent houses from being flooded. I would like to see an updated IPO also. I know we're in a transition with the Public Works Department. So, I mean, that's a factor here too. So I think if we spend a little more time to make sure everybody's comfortable with what we're seeing, that's only going to benefit us in the long run. I do know that we have a deadline with the FEMA grant money that we've got to adhere to, but we can always ask for an extension, I think. You know, we don't have to spend all that money. We, we can, you know, I worked on a $28 million FEMA grant. We only spent 21 million of it. You know, it's, it's not like we have to spend all that money. So if we can utilize it to the best of our advantage, I think we should, we should try to find a way to do that. But in the meantime, you know, we need to stay on top of current issues. We, the current maintenance, the, the current runoff things, we need to fix those and address those immediately. The biggest one in my mind is the water that flows from Fernwood Park right down the boat ramp into Lake Butler every time it rains. That's, has not even been mentioned in the last month or two, except by me. So, you know, that's our greatest resource there. Why aren't we doing something about that? We, we need to address that immediately. So I think that's pretty much all I have. Again, thank you for your input and participation.
So, you looking for a revised IPO?
Revised IPO, something. Because what we have now, we don't have anything now. We don't have anything to look at. There's no plan. There's no diagram. There's nothing.
I get it. I'm just trying to build consensus.
I'm glad we're moving away from the, from the road with standard because that plan was detrimental to our tree canopy, was detrimental, I think, to property values. It was detrimental to our safety because increased traffic and speeding and that kind of thing. So I'm glad we're moving away from that. But, and I think we're chipping away where we could be. So let's take as much time as we need to get it right because it's a big project.
I think we can all agree that, you know, we have stormwater issues, you know, whether it be deep washouts or even worse, you know, flooding and trespassing onto other properties, which can lead to whole other issues. As I've said it many a times, I'm not favorable at all to Band-Aids or piecemealing these projects together. I think we need to come up with a design that includes whole basins, whole areas, work it from, from the top to bottom. You know, because that also, all the neighbors and such would be, you know, invested, you know, with it too. It puts less burden of the people at the bottom of the basin. So I'm favorable doing it once and doing it right. You know, there's mentioned these, you know, 14 foot swales when I've had a meeting yesterday, you know, of course, Mrs. Ains, I, I couldn't answer her. You know, can we reduce 14 foot? And, and the reason we can't is because we're dealing with, with concepts and we need to move to the next stage with, which is a design. And my understanding, we'll still have the opportunity once we get to 50% of that design. So before we go to permitting, before we go to, you know, any, any construction, we'll have, you know, another look at it. All grants aside, we have to do something. And I think we need to do the whole area at once. And I'd like to still fight, you know, to be able to include grant money with it as long as it is, you know, amenable, you know, to the residents. We've gotten other projects done after, you know, looking over the last 10 years using the same grant money and it had no significant changes to the landscape. And part of that was my side yard. So I think there's a way. I appreciate staff, you know, other volunteers and council, how many hours they put in the last couple of weeks. I'm tired. I know the residents, our neighbors are tired, but we've got to push through. It's not just that we're on a deadline for these grant monies, but we are on a race to another rainy season in six months. So there is a process that we have to go through, a design and then construction plans and then bidding out for who that contractor is. So we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. I think what I would be amenable to is if we kind of take this off in, in chunks, at least we're moving forward. And as mentioned before, is, is, is start with that design, you know, where we can get down to the, the nitty gritty sharpener pencils and actually show the residents, you know, what, what it'll look like. And hopefully that keeps us on some sort of schedule of getting something done in the spring or the summer. Obviously, if we don't get any grant money for it, we're, we're going to have to do one of two things, wait and save. We can potentially get a loan, but something I'm not favorable to, if we can grab some sort of great, uh, grant money is, is to raise taxes, is to, to add extra assessments when we have money that we can potentially use. So I'd like to, whether it's this week or if we take the time to put together another IPO for next week to at least get started on the design for the drainage systems. And I would also like to include, because council has committed to potable water to make sure that integrated within the design, we know round about where those utilities are going to land.
Thank you, Councilperson Sepp. Are you thinking one IPO or two IPOs if, if you're not 100% sure about design? Right. In terms of moving forward, would you move forward with one design or two designs or?
Sorry, I was turned off. That, that we need some sort of design. So whether it's a design in place and we have to save up for it or a design in place that we have funds that are readily available. We have to come up with a design and we have to come up with time for both projects.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Here we go. I, I just heard Councilman Sepp mention that both basins have issues. I don't think we have to reform the entire basin to address those issues, to address those individually. Not, you know, I don't think you really have to go to all the houses. Mentioned a deadline. What is the deadline without an extension right now?
For the contracts that we currently have, which is West Second Avenue and Butler. We have a new design submitted by December without extension. But we've asked for extensions for West Second Avenue because we're including the water system. And depending upon what happens with the other IPO, we can ask for an extension if you want to proceed with that or if not. So we choose directions we want to continue with, trying to get that grant. And then yes, we can ask for an extension and then we send that if we're going in that direction.
Okay. Thank you. I don't blame any resident at all for not trusting the system and what's going on. You like, we, we have made standards and we don't have. Now, today at the 11th hour, maybe we don't have to get those standards. Maybe we can wait the roads along and do the stormwater. Stormwater is they're looking at it right now. And the thing that I heard from Kimmy Horn was they were doubtful they would sign off on anything less than 14 foot. Windermere itself is unique, not only to this area or the state of Florida or the United States, but the entire world. It's one of the few places where you can see expensive cars passing each other on dirt roads every day. It has a very unique feel with the dirt roads, the small town. And when you start putting in 14 foot swales, like was mentioned earlier, you're going to be taking out shrubbery. And you're not going to be able to plant that shrubbery back in there. So you've got this big thing in your front yard that you get to irrigate and mow that admittedly, the dirt from the roads is going to run into anyway. I'd like to address the maintenance issue. How long with Councilman Martini? We're in a bad way with maintaining. We have not maintained a lot of what we have. You don't need a book and a schedule to maintain what you have. I think that that should have been a mission a long time ago. I think it should be completed. And, and in accordance with the mayor, I don't think we need an engineering firm to develop that plan for us. We need to step back, take a look at the problems that we have and address those problems. In September of last year, we approved an IPO for $70,000 for Kimley Horn to do the Butler Basin design. That's what we spent so far. Now we're asking for another 181,000 to add to that, granted. We approved $80,000 for the Bessie Basin. Now we're going with 210,000 more. It's a lot of money that we're putting out there for design. I am not convinced that this is designed to that scale is needed. If we find out what the problems are, we identify those problems and take care of them, then let's do that. Rather than going in and rearranging an entire neighborhood to guide the water down and until these two recent IPOs, there was nothing as far as doing Fernwood Park. There are still no berms scheduled for Fernwood Park or for Bessie, either one. That's what keeps the water from going into the. That's what keeps the water from going into the lake. We need to stop that first before we worry about water running down Butler Avenue. We've, we've corrected some of that problem with grading and I think we need to continue that. But when you sit and you look at the existing system, and I'm going to talk about Ninth Avenue for a moment, between Oakdale and East, I, I just, I fail to see why you would want to change the drainage system from the south side of the road to the north side of the road. You already have an existing system that's not being maintained. But you're going to take out a pipe that crosses that intersection at Oakdale and Ninth and then just put one running down the north side of Ninth Avenue. It, it just, something smells, it's not right. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, I think we're over-engineering some of this stuff that we don't need to over-engineer. Now, that being said, I think town staff has done exactly what council has asked them to do. We just keep kicking the can further down the road. We keep changing what the requirements are. We had a workshop on Bessie. Well, and then it came up, well, let's make it one-way streets. Well, we're back to design and as good as Kim Lee Horn or any of our contract engineers are, are, they're not doing this for free. So every time we kick that can and change what we're looking at, it costs us money. So just on design, $251,000 for Butler and $290,000 for Bessie. That's what we're looking at. Plus, we're going, well, as a part of that, we're going to have to put in 25% of this coming out of our town. And I'm telling you, for $500,000, I think we can do a lot in-house without having to redesign this town and take away from the charm of this town. We've had engineering that does things, admittedly, they've done some more with in-house, not Kim Lee Horn, but the in-house contract engineers that we've had, they fix problems. I don't think you need two engineers and an entire engineering company that admittedly has no local experience on dirt roads to be designing a stormwater system for dirt roads. It just doesn't make sense to me. We as council, we represent you, the people. It's not what we want, not what staff wants or anything else. And staff believe me, and I mean that in all sincerity, I don't think we've given clear guidance from council to staff on what the people want. And I think we need to step up as council and say, here's what we want. We've listened to people and this is the direction we're going to move in. I don't have an overall solution to this thing, but I do know that one of the things we need to look at is in getting the word out. I find it difficult working to receive a, an agenda on Thursday sometime, Thursday afternoon is when I received mine, to get ready for a Tuesday meeting the following We've had 900-page agendas, that's not enough time to review it. So I think we need to either change when we have the meetings or change when we get the agenda out, so we can take a look at it. And that's just a suggestion. I know I find it difficult to sit down and read all of this, but the other things I have to do, what's going out, talking to residents, and I've, I've met most of you, I've been by and looked at the problems that you have. I, I just, I think we need more and better. And after, and I agree, and I've had the comments made to me about four times this afternoon, we send out all these letters and all of a sudden, at 2:00 on the afternoon of the council meeting, change. I don't think that was intentional at all. I would just like to have seen that word go out earlier, so that you would have a chance to absorb it, we would have a chance to go through it and look at it. I don't have an answer for what we should do or shouldn't do, but I will say this, if we're against a hard line, then in my opinion, we back off of this thing, reevaluate what we have and then move forward.
And having you propose, Councilperson McKinley, to reevaluate what we have.
Well, I think we already have identified a lot of the problem areas. I don't think that the entire area of Butler and Seventh.
Especially when we're doing nothing down.
But we have two people I know that are in the room that have been flooded.
Then fix those problems.
I know. So, okay, hang on, hang on, hang on.
The entire area to fix two problems?
What I'm asking is, how do we determine from an engineering standpoint, what, you know, I guess what I'm asking is, what are you proposing? I mean, all, all I hear that you're not sure what to do, but I'm looking for a little direction in terms of what you'd like to do.
That depends on whether we get an extension or not. If we can get an extension on this or we can look at it again, which is going to cost more money, then I'm not opposed to it. But if we're against a hard deadline on this thing, then my suggestion is to stay in their good graces. We return this, we have the design. What goes with that? The conceptual design is already there.
But we didn't like the concept, so that's, that's what I'm saying. Like, you know, listen, on one point, I'm sorry.
It could be modified.
It can be modified, for sure. But what I'm saying is, is that you've got to have a, if we don't want to go with that design and we want another design, so we're going to have to give staff some specific instructions.
Okay.
Agree? You agree with that belief, right? Okay. So we need to figure out what that direction is, okay? If it's to do one, to do both, or to engineer, you know, I mean, if you want to know exactly where every drop of water is coming and where it's going, I'm sure we can get that. I don't know if it's the most effective way to solve our problems, maybe it is.
Wow.
But, you know, that's a hydrology study and that would, you know, that's a, that's going to be.
I understand.
I'm going to pay for that too.
But not listening to people in this town is a worse problem.
I'm not saying not listen, to not listen. I am asking what, you know, what do you, which direction do we want to go? What are we proposing to do? Are we proposing to say, you know, we want to table this for tonight and, and give town clear directions on, give town staff clear direction on which way to proceed and with which IPO? What we want that IPO to look like and what the road section width will be? You know, we, we have that ability here. I just want to make sure that we give staff some really clear directions, so we're not leaving everybody kind of hanging out. And that's for the residents as well, because they want to know what's going to happen next, they would like to some specific.
Then as for me, I would say to return the money that we have invested in this thing, any money that we take on the Butler project, and we take a look at it ourselves, in-house. I don't think we need.
And that will require additional engineering and design as well. You know that, right? That's what I'm just going to make sure we're all.
I understand. But I don't think you have to design the entire area, when you have a couple of problems in an area.
You're, you're going to have to do pretty significant design and engineering to find out where the water comes from. I, I know you roll your eyes at me. I've been there, I see where it comes from, you know? But you, it, that's not good enough. It has to be done properly. So I'm just saying, let's give specific direction on what we want. That's all I'm asking. Okay? Yes, sir.
I, I want to clarify, when I say design, you know, for example, drainage design 29,000, I was not talking about approving 210,000.
Yeah, I don't know where that number came from, too. I haven't seen that number.
I, I think he was adding the total of each project. That, that's, I just wanted to clarify when I mean design, it was not task one through 15, it was design of drainage and just include potable water with it.
All right.
But that's what the IPO was written for.
Yeah. But you, and, and you clearly want an IPO, like we're saying, that isn't 14-foot swales, right? Yes. You want an IPO that does not include 14-foot. Well, we can ask them, they don't have to respond if they don't want to.
We should have already asked them. These are questions that should have come out, that should have. We went to staff, we asked, let me put this on the big air.
We went to, we said, look at whether we have to make these reforms or not. Actually, it came back, was yes. We had to maintain the 18-foot. We had to maintain the 18-foot. We had to maintain the six-foot. Right away, we had to maintain the three-foot. Yep, 14-foot swell. That's what I was told. You should have been told something different. Now, all of a sudden, since 129 residents, and I understand now why this program. Adjugably, we don't have to meet these reforms anymore. And I just take exception to that.
I, I know you're frustrated by that and I share that, but at the same time, what you're doing, what I'm saying tonight is, are we going to incorporate that input and, and proceed with a different IPO? Or do you want to, you know, does council want to table that? I mean, I think we, we're going to have to give staff some directions out of the core. So we can, we come back to our five options. All right? We can go, we can approve it like it is, we can tell people to take the money back, we can table it, what's a different IPO with specific instructions to staff? You know, that, that for both options, so. I just want to be specific, I don't want to leave anybody hanging out there. What do I do? So I feel like.
Person Martini, he's not a fan.
Councilperson Martini, he's not a fan.
Or not sure 100%.
100%. You know, I mean, I think everybody wants to solve the problem, but we want to do it with pixie dust and I don't know how we're going to do that.
That's the thing.
You know, that's the thing. I mean, it's going to take some compromise in every direction I'm afraid to get there.
That's where we got to go.
And, and that's where we got to go.
Councilperson Sep, having any ideas?
I think we're getting caught in the weeds about, you know, where the, where the money's coming from. You know, if, if we can just find ourselves out of said weeds and, and look at the bigger picture, is we got to create a design, we have to give direction on the design. And we've conceded to the fact, and that's why it's been narrowed down because of the voice of the residents, that they do not own anything as IPO, IPO number one originally showed. So we sit here today, we've got a problem, shouldn't kick the can down the road. Whether we take funds or not from, I don't care if it's the Pope or, or FEMA, or if we save up and put our piggy banks together, we have to come up with a design, fix a stormwater problem.
So, I guess this brings me back to my original thought and question. Do we want to take, do we want to pick one of these basins and ask for an updated? Teresa, I, I don't know how to make you, I don't know how to make it so you can hear Teresa, I'm sorry. I have my mic on and everything. Basically, what I'm looking for is, do we want to move ahead on one basin with a modified IPO, what roads more narrow or no more wide than they are now? And see if we can get to something that works and, and the residents are okay with it or that does not include 14 foot? And you may lose utilities in that. I know that's, you know, I know, I know you don't want to do that, but that's six feet or at least, you know, I mean, I can't imagine they can do it with less than three.
Well, in, in a conversation today is because we're moving away from being a road project with it, that we do have the capabilities to flip-flop those, that we can make that choice of putting a three-foot shoulder on the swell side and put the six-foot. I, I apologize. So conversations I had this morning with, with Kim Lee Horn was, you know, if we're not going Green Book standards and not making this a road project, keeping it stormwater, that we have the capabilities to flip-flop which side of the road the utilities are before going Green Book standards, it had to be a six-foot shoulder on the swell side. Doing it this way, we can do our standard three-foot on the swell side, which would lessen the burden and then push the utility on the opposite side of the road. So, you know, adjacent neighbors, so, you know, share a little piece of the burden. So, so those are all options that, you know, we can get down to in, you know, the design. And, and, and moving away from Green Book standards and leaving the roads alone, there's a lot more elbow room, you know, for the engineers to work with.
Right. And obviously, so we don't have to, you know, we need to give this an opportunity for everybody to understand and to take in and, you know, and see what that's going to look like. So, you know, because it is a lot of change at a late date and I don't want to be mindful of that. Yeah, my mic is dead. It says I talk too much. So. Thank you, guys. I apologize. We make sure everybody can hear. So, so basically, I think what you're looking at there is that you would take an opportunity to give staff direction, take a week's pause and see, you know, we can put an IPO together that is very specific and there is a down, that doesn't ride in the roads, doesn't have to include utilities, if council doesn't want that direction. Or you can even go conceptual again at that point, I don't know what, you know, if there's pros and cons to that. But I do think, I've said all along, that we need to address this, we need to address the flooding and the runoff in some way or we're going to get, we're going to be back here dealing with this again. So, you know, I don't want it to be something that everybody is, you know, dislikes. So, you know, there's got to be another variable, Tom and I talked about, using the steeper ditch versus the larger, wider swales. You gave the six feet, you know, I mean, and then we'll get dirt in those things, I mean, I can't tell you there's not going to be dirt, there's dirt in my house. You know, that's part of this, so, you know, I mean, I'm just looking for, you know, give and take from every component. And, and the question is, is that something that council's amenable to? And if they're not, then, you know, that's fine, that's everybody's prerogative.
Can we, can we get a new concept design for the Seventh and Butler plan that, that we can, that shows the new ball of wax or the new ballpark that we're in? Because this is completely different, not necessarily, just take what they already gave us and, and adjust it to fit this new directive that we got at 2:00 PM today. See what that looks like, because right now, we have nothing to look at. And then we can go, okay, that looks great, let's do the same thing with Bessie and Ninth, or we can say, no, that looks like crap and send the money back to FEMA. Let's, let's pick a finite thing, then we have some proof, we have something that everybody can look at. And they get four days to look at it and come back here and let's talk about it or whatever.
Yes, that's what I requested too. Agreed.
But I guess my question, and Nefah is asking, John, is that, I mean, is that pixie dust? Because if it is, just tell us.
No, I, I think that's part of the process. You would do that normally, even if you.
Have Laura look at it also.
Even if you, even if you signed on a full IPO, you go through concept, design development and construction documents. We can put milestones in there, it basically says that we don't go into design development or construction documents until we have a concept that's approved. And, and that, that's a reasonable approach, it's consistent with what we just did with the town facilities and so that could be done. I also think that it is important for a little clarity, because Bob, you had made the comment about the confusion and I think some of the confusion actually came from, you know, from us and council. You know, we're all called over here, we're the ones that agreed, we wanted to come up with standardized road profiles. And so we asked our engineers to include that. And then we also said in the IPO, we're doing this, we want to build, standardize and make our roads. And so we did. And you know what? Because we did roadway design, included stormwater design, that's when the standards kicked in. So we, in essence, forced the standards on ourselves by the decisions that we made and the direction that we gave staff. And so all I'm suggesting is that at the end of it, it was kind of like, okay, guys, this isn't, they don't like it. So we got to come back with another alternative and go back to what we normally do, which is just purely stormwater design. Then we take with Kim Lee Horn, ask them to do part, you know, milestones within the IPO that give a concept based on the bullet points that we've given them, here's the things that residents don't. Then we take with Kim Lee Horn, ask them to do part, you know, milestones within the IPO that give a concept based on the bullet points that we've given them. Here's the things that residents don't like. And if Kim Lee Horn comes back and says, you know, we can't sign off on that, great. No harm, no foul. Figure it out.
Right. And then we know. And I think that's been the challenge here. And, you know, one of the things that we've talked to a lot of residents about is, you know, we, we've got to provide this information in a different way, and we've got to make sure that we're customizing this stuff.
But we've confused, yeah, but we've confused that, that information going directly to Kim Lee Horn because we said, provide, you know, standard road widths and, you know, look at, you know, look at utilizing our right-of-way appropriately. Bad mistake, right? So here we are now, and I think we have an opportunity to, to get out of this in a positive way, where we can actually do good, solid, creative design that makes the charm stay the way that it needs to stay. You know, we're going to have to get with the residents and, you know, look at areas where we can put swales, where residents don't want swales, and how does that, how does that, you know, over affect an overall basin? You know, and then, you know, we may have to have Kim Lee Horn come back to us and say, look, you know, best management practices, we wanted to fix it 100%, but because we only put this many swales in and in these locations, we're only fixing 20%. And then that's where we're going to have to have Mike say, are we meeting best management practices? Is it filled with the South Florida water management permit? Can we still get that approved by FEMA? I mean, you know, this is, you know, at some point, sometime, you guys have to give him direction. So who knows what he's doing?
Exactly. And that's all I'm searching for here. And again, if it's not doable, then it's not doable. And we'll take that and we'll say, no, thank you, and appreciate everybody's hard work and everybody's input and move forward. But I do not, based on doing this for a little while, that these things tend to come back as issues if we don't try to have some type of remedy to them. And that's what I'm looking for. And I'm hoping that we can get to a place that is narrow enough and confined enough and makes people feel like it's a reasonable solution. And it may impact us for, for utilities and things like that, but maybe we can get creative there too. Really challenging for everybody, but it's, I feel like it's our only way to go unless we just do a hard no at this point.
My challenge, I guess, question.
You know, it's how detailed we get, and that's part of the problem that we're running into. And it's worth swales, but I can't give a resident, you can't give a resident. Yes, we can reduce it because they don't have numbers and some of the information that is needed to do that final determination. So are we going to be in the same position without this, throwing a concept?
Don't we have all that information for the Seventh and Butler basin already?
Part of the concept would have to be conceptual hydro calculations so that we're at least in a ballpark figure. So it's not just necessarily drawing, but it's also conceptually understanding the hydro calculations. And we've already done some of that, which I think they've already done. You know, they've done the surveys, they've done the stuff. So, you know, we, I think we've got the kit of parts to figure it out. And so we just need to see what Kim Lee Horn can come back with.
Yeah, because certainly you can't go too, you can't just draw it out. If you want to get precise and narrow as possible, you're going to need the numbers. So, I mean, I think that that's where, where that rubber meets the road, you've got to invest in that. If you really want to get to something that, that would be something that residents would be okay with, be okay with. You know, because I don't think, because I don't think we can just draw that. You can draw 14 foot away, I know it's going to work, but I'll carry tons of water. You know, we're talking about really getting to where it's actualized.
Right, because people have questions about, you know, where's my light pole going to be? Or how's that going to be affected? Or, you know, what's, what's, you know, can we go around this tree? And we don't know in concept phase, and that's why, you know, we've got to figure out a way to get to that design so we can, you know, sharpen the pencils and, you know, there's going to be snags along the way, but we know that. And so there's a surveying, whatever set up it is, or, and, you know, so on and so forth. So, and it's going to get to that as quick as possible.
You try and expedite it.
Expedite it.
And, yes, you know, it's got some, some to do.
Importantly is, you know, we, for four or five years, we've seen problems, some areas popping up and, you know. We have an opportunity in front of us and try to head it ahead of the middle of any season. And, you know, try to fix them, not band-aid them or put up temporary, to fix it now.
We need a motion for you.
Yeah.
I know, right? Like, I don't even know how you make that, but.
There's one thing, again, there's issues with the fact that, you know, we came up with a higher system that's been here today. And I think, you know, council members have stated and residents have stated that they needed time to take a look at that to see if that's something that they're even willing to retain. And what the residents and the council also suggested was to lose on that. You know, if we were to fund the design, if this idea was based on, or about what the residents want, what town council wants, and maybe establish this design, and then we can take it to FEMA, and then if we rid it, then maybe get one line of construction. Right. If they don't want to rid it, then we still have that design, we can use state of the board and incrementally, you know, if it's due, we do it by phase. Or if we have to state of the board to take on or something like that, or like that in the SSIS series. But it changes what you want with the higher approach, if we can continue today. Again, you know, that's based on all the comments, all the questions and all the insight. We also have to wait for K H to come back as well, to say, yes, S P and D P A, you know, as long as we need. Don't do this, this, or this. So we got to have our machinery to go ahead and do what we want and still have the possibility to do the funding. So I'd ask you what the hard market is, you know, to table us the next two weeks, and then look at the idea. And then if you still don't like the idea, you know, maybe we can move some of the conceptual planning of that. But again, you know, things get tighter or more, you know, to where people actually want to have the design. It's easy to hear all the time, you know, the actual words, and they want to have the name of the teams, you know, it's, that's not the, where we're at, where we're at, where people are at for the trees. And the trees, the actual design, so, you know, we needed one way, we got other, as you said before, or you're starting from, you know, brackets are there or for a little bit of cost eradication. But at least we have something, at least we can still have the chance to actually take a look at it from FEMA for the construction.
You know, I think that that is a reasonable way that we can go. And I don't want, like, so I don't want to say we're going to meet next week. You need a week or two to craft this. And then I want a good amount of time for everyone to digest it as well. So I know we're, I know we're getting tight on time in terms of we're heading into the holidays. But I just, you know, I think it would be a mistake to, you know, use a week up and then only have a couple of days to look at it. I'm afraid we'll, we'll be in the same place. So I want to make sure we have a little time.
November is for if we come back next Wednesday or next Friday, those dates are available. If we need to go ahead and do a case certain, maybe you have, you're willing to do that as a man. Call this one, maybe, instead of this subject, it could be the idea.
My concern is, I want to make sure that folks have that in front of them, you know. Obviously, it would be a single idea, it would take a little less time, but I want to make sure everybody has it for two, three days at least to digest it.
Yeah. If they're, maybe if I'm open, they can drive it then.
Right.
Hopefully, I can see by, on afternoon.
Okay.
Comes up or comes down.
It's coming.
I see. Can you hear me?
He's, he's like, I don't want to be here.
He's not, he's not muted.
It's not going to take that long.
Okay. My thing is, as long as we have time, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, we have November 18th, November 20th, which is next Wednesday, next Friday, to do this little subject, you know, meeting. And it would just be to rally on the idea, which would be the hiring method. Because it doesn't seem like there's consent or the willingness to go forward with the ideas as written.
Right.
Have visuals on that also, like a concept?
There'll be your concepts, again, their concepts being that it's that.
Show us possibilities.
Yes.
Because I don't know anybody in this room that would buy a house without looking at a floor plan first. I mean, not to, not to, I mean, I know. I understand, but residents are comfortable with this because according to my count, they're not. They don't want to move forward at all. So we need to, to their comfort zone, make sure they're good. And they have to review it. And then, yea or nay.
Take the time, you're right.
I agree.
This is not the, I don't know. If it's going to take an extra week or two, I would rather us take that to put something in front of people that they can appreciate and weigh in on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And same for council, because you're going to have to, you're going to have to move something that's going to make everybody feel okay. Yes, sir.
I would like, and thank you, John, for bringing that up. We do appreciate, but the initial IPO, Butler, which was 103? Call for pay. That was in August last year. It was came back. And then we came up with the revised plan in September, okay? Not realizing the road was going to be a part of that. You know, I know that I own, sort of taking a closer look at these IPOs. You know, staff who present us with the best option, and they come forward, and I can't. And so I had to whip out my measuring tape before and walk around and measure things to find out that what I was told wasn't true. Start looking at IPOs a little bit closer and really read into them. And thank you for bringing that up. We did. We proved it with the roads in it. And maybe that's something we need to really take a look at in the future. And it would have done away with a lot of the confusion. I have no problem with, with looking further down the road at something. Is, we're just concentrating on Seventh and Butler right now, correct?
Well, I think we should do one at a time. There's no point.
I don't say do one at a time. Let's, let's get Seventh and Butler out of the way. In the meantime, what I would like to be sent, I'd like a copy of it, maybe the rest of you would too. I'd like a list of the problem areas in the Seventh and Butler basin, that we're looking at. The Firwood Basin that we're looking at. What were the problems that caused us to look at this in the first place? So if I, if we could get that, I'd be just happy as could be, because it gives me something to look at, what are we looking at? Right now, it's, we're going to do this whole basin and we're going to redesign and we're going to move bushes up out of the schoolhouse and.
No, we love the schoolhouse.
And I'd like to know why we're doing that.
What were the problems?
What were the problems that kicked off for us to do the entire basin?
Two of the folks are in the room. I know that. In fact, I've seen the, I've seen video and seen the actual water.
What?
Two of the folks are in the room that have flooding issues. That's part of that problem.
I understand.
I just want to make sure. And I agree. Let's find out where they all are, but that's what we're going to do the engineer.
If all that water is down both streets, straight to her house, by all means, then we have to address that. But, you know, what's causing it? And we need to look at all that, or at least I want to look at all of it and have in my mind and be satisfied with, yes, this is really neat. Because right now, I'm not at that.
Well, and I think a lot of other people aren't as well. So hopefully, we can get something that will be a good compromise. And then we can make a move on it at that point. Getting it down the road for the whole week. So we're going to table D1 and 2, which is the IPO Butler Basin Design and the IPO Bessie Basin Design with staff to bring us back the revised IPO for the Butler Basin Design as soon as they have that with adequate time for everyone to review. All right. Next item up is the on-call signed design contractor, councilman Steph. Would you like to present, sir?
As you know, we have, you know, several projects in the pipeline that will require some signage. And, you know, those may include the town facilities. We've got the Ward Trail, et cetera. So what I had tasked long-range planning with is looking at a third party to do our design work on, on said sign on individual IPOs. So let's just say we have a project for the Ward Trail that we would put out an IPO for sign design. After kicking around for a while, you know, we realized that we have two firms in-house that we already have master service contracts with. One for our zoning was Wade Trim, and then secondly was Camille Horn for our engineering. Reached out to both of those firms to see if they would have any interest in putting together a resume. Wade Trim respectfully declined. They do have a quote-unquote in-house person, but they're not local, that does that type of design work. So they felt, knowing how our town works, that they needed somebody that was not only in the Orlando area, but the state of Ford. I believe their person was in another state completely. So we narrowed it down to Camille Horn. We already have a master service agreement with them. This would be essentially, you know, a, an amendment or at least a direction for staff if we do have signage in the future for Camille Horn to take a, put together an IPO for a project and design a sign for us to, you know, manufacture and install.
Chris? Counsel, any thoughts or comments?
Do we have a, this LRP recommends we move forward with this? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just out of curiosity, why do we have the engineering firm here?
Yeah, I was wondering myself.
They're more, I mean, they do more than just the approach. So they put together a resume, they got a department that handles it. So I like that idea, something that would be a whole new sort of work. And putting out an RFQ and, you know, getting, we already have the talent, there's more way to house. So it seemed like a natural way to go. They're already working on credible these projects with them. So they kind of know the way the town works and the type of threats and workshops that we require. So they know how to put those IPOs together. So instead of teaching a new dog, you know, new tricks, you know, finding some of the wisdom later with the town. So that's probably why we looked at Wade Trim and Camille Horn, because we had the experience with them. And as I said, Wade Trim, we're happy to use that one.
One of the questions I had, we just went through a branding for the town, which gave us a lot of information as to signs that we were going to use and all that. That's why I'm confused. We have that.
That is correct.
Why do we need a engineering firm to, I mean, we already have this large for the city.
Right. It would be, because you, you have the downtown business district has some guidelines in it. You know, we have set the guidelines that we put forth within the branding. But if you recall, we tabled, gave away signs, so we don't have a design for that. We haven't heard it this year because of COVID, but every year when events, season gets hot, we get the complaints about banners everywhere. So there's some.
So there's at some point need a solution for advertising these town hall meetings. And then also our various events around town. Presumably there'll be some sort of signage, whether it be monument or something packed onto the building or facilities. Presumably there'll be some sort of signage on, you know, Ward Trail. And those are just some of the, we saw that there is projects coming down the pipeline that would require that. And, you know, to have somebody on board to be able to put a design. I know it seems a little odd, you know, when we work with them on stormwater and such, but, you know, we also work with them on designing our trail.
Yeah.
And obviously have done it because they've attached a resume to some of those examples and such.
Just keep in mind that if they decide to go with the gateway signs that were designed before, even if I pass away by them, I will come back and haunt you.
And that's why, you know, there'd be
It would, it would be good to
There would be clear IPOs for a project, so it'd be on the project basis where they're very familiar with our sign debacle and everything like that.
Okay. The cost associated once we, unless we enact their services, right?
That's correct. So basically, once we need that, he is town, they have permission to go forward and ask for an IPO.
So they one, we're putting our eggs in one basket with Kimberly Horn. Two, are we eliminating the cost estimating factor here? Or will Kimberly Horn do the cost estimating and they're bidding for like a percentage of the money? Because I assume they actually
They don't manufacture it.
So, so very similar to the bridge that would be in front of us. Yeah, they will, they'll approve an IPO. They'll either work with other manufacturers, obviously they can look into paper to come up with the design and then come up with, you know, here's our couple of options, let's say three options. These are what the prices are going to be. And this is assuming you recommend that, you know, you can do the installation, but you would probably, depending on price, do a RFQ of some sort for pricing.
Right? Yeah. Well, if LRP is good with it, I'm good with it as well.
Is there anything?
We'll, we'll check with them in a second. I would also like to point out, I mean, it doesn't, it wouldn't stop you from getting another designer either. Just authorizes them to do it if we
That's right. There's a project that I'd offer as a broader to call, give them a call, say, hey, we're looking for an IPO.
Okay.
Liz or Andy, do you guys, council people, do you have any comments?
I, I think it's a good idea. I would prefer that we have someone who's familiar with the town branding standards and can apply them easily and who already knows our processes in place. And, you know, honestly, you could, I suppose, argue if you have a real interest in design or aesthetic, that, you know, we should go out and look for the very best. But, you know, I mean, these are municipal signs, you know, I mean, I think consistency is great. And I think having an adherence to brand standards is a good thing too, so that when people come into our town, they're able to, they're wayfaring signs and a lot of, or wayfinding signs and a lot of, you know, aspects here. And so, so people are able to easily get to and through our town and find points of interest and, and, you know, know what they need to know as, as they come visit us. And our residents can find things too, our newcomers. So I, I think it's a good idea to go with somebody and have at least this setup as a, as a, as an easy way for us to get some things done. We need some efficiency somewhere. This is a good, this is a good plan.
Andy, do you have anything, sir?
No, Bill and Bob covered it, so now I'm, I'm fine.
All right, council, looking for a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilperson McKinley, second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilperson Sap. Any further comment, council? Again, voting with Councilperson Sap.
Aye.
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 Both saying that.
Thank you very much. That leaves us to mayoral and council liaison reports. Council, any items that you would like to discuss?
I have okay. Elders Committee on Tuesday, October 27th, the committee distributed 52 box lunches for Windermere elders. Many of these elders have been outside their homes since March. Many of them were also anxious to just have someone to talk to. I know I spent about 30 minutes talking to one lady because she just wouldn't talk to somebody. So many of them also mentioned the elders check by our police department. And they are thankful for that interaction. And again, I'd like to thank Bill Martini for coordinating the purchases of the sandwiches. You guys are good deal on that. And thanks to all members of the committee for helping organize and distribute the food. We're also planning a similar event on December 15th to take lunches around to all the elders that sign up. Parks and Recreation Committee, the Parks and Recreation Committee held a virtual 510K from October 1st to the 15th. We had 650 people sign up for the race and only about 15 requested a refund. They were split between running the virtual race here in town and running somewhere else. The only ones that were qualified for the awards were the ones that ran the actual race here in town. Halloween parade was conducted on October 31st in conjunction with the Windermere Police Department Foundation. And thanks to the Ways Committee for helping fill the bags with goodies and for all the volunteers that helped make this a wonderful Halloween. And I understand that we ran out of candy and had to go buy some more, but thank you to all that participated in that. Parks and Recreation will be holding their next meeting on Thursday, November 12th, 5:00 PM. This will be a hybrid meeting, correct, Robert? With some of the committee and residents meeting in town halls and will be available to those that wish to join remotely. And I will be sending out an email to the interested parties on that meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilperson McKinley. Council, any additional items to add for your reports?
I do.
Councilperson Martini?
On the DRB meeting that was scheduled, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting in October, but the one that was scheduled for next week that was supposed to contain the the plans for Sixth and Main Street, that has been moved to December, correct, Robert? The, they had some paperwork that didn't get in on time. So, so there's only one tiny little variance on the DRB. Feel free to join us if you want, but the big, the big question is going to be in December for that property over there. Also, I heard in talking to all the residents, I got some feedback about our website. They're, they're having, had some difficulty locating the council person and the mayor's email addresses. And looking on the phone, you go to the front page and then scroll all the way, like all the way to the bottom, past the little notes and stuff. And ask, can we like put, put a tab or something that has government contacts or something? Because it's, it's not easy to find on our website. And lastly, PDCS website is, is terrible. Can we ask them to upgrade or buy some more bandwidth or something? Because it's, it's a really, I'm sure you, you've experienced it, Robert. It takes forever to, to find stuff on our permitting site, PDCS. Thank you.
Any additional, I see Councilperson Williams, go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. HPV did meet last week. Unfortunately, we did not have it formed, so we had a couple of discussions, nothing was voted on. Quick, two quick things was Rayland Mitch, Mitchell from the Ways Committee had brought up that they are looking at a project called Zest Fest. It's actually, it's a citrus picking event that they'd like to look at doing in the spring and asked HPV to open up the schoolhouse because it would be in the orchard at the schoolhouse. The second quick discussion, but wasn't voted on was the need for the sidewalk around the old schoolhouse to be removed. It's what we found is it's the major cause of the deterioration of the exterior. It's rain hits the sidewalks, flashes up on the building. It's totally, we're losing the sight of it as, as we speak. So we're trying to work towards that. Other than that, that was the quick discussion and quick end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Williams. Councilperson Andrew, anything from you?
Ways Committee didn't meet this month, but they will next month. Next week on Monday, the Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board will be meeting in person. However, you need to notify in advance. So if anyone's interested in attending that, it's actually going to be at the EPD offices in downtown, not at the Chain of Lakes Middle School as they ordinarily hold their meetings. So, so it's a little extra trip for anyone who's interested in going in person. However, they are going to hold their meeting by WebEx as well. So that information too, I can provide to anyone who's interested. Or if you just do a Google search for Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board, you can find the information there. Or contact David Hansen, which is david.hansen, H A N S E N at ocfl.net. And then that, that meeting's at 4:00 PM next Monday, the 16th. And then the Tree Board will be meeting this month as usual on Thursday at 5:00 PM, so far as I know. That is all.
Thank you, Councilperson Andrew. Councilperson Sap, anything? Thank you, sir. Councilperson, again, they already spoke about the parade. We had a good time at the parade, we did run out of candy. Chief was able to get us a bunch more candy quickly, so we, we were able to pick up and finish strong. So it was a, it was a really great event and appreciate everybody coming out and supporting that for Parks and Rec and the Windermere PD Foundation. Staff, staff reports? Okay, I don't blame you. Chief, anything? Chief's like, I'll just be quiet.
No, I set out a safety watch there.
Excellent. Hey, we appreciate that, thank you, sir. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned at 9:43 PM. Thank you all, appreciate it.